This is our regular session, could we please start with a roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs?
Here.
Councilmembers Bagley?
Here.
Christensen?
Here.
Finley?
Here.
Levison?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
And Santos?
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have the quorum.
Alright, let's stand for pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the chamber. Only those on the list will be allowed to speak at first call, public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on the list will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening, or at final call, public invited to be heard on any item at the end of the meeting. So, we need to approve the minutes for November 25th, 2014. Can I have a motion? Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I move, we approve the minutes.
Alright, I'll second that. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Next, we need to move the December 2nd minutes. Does anybody have any? Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I move we approve those minutes as well.
Alright, it's been moved to the second round, let's vote. That passes seven to zero. Clara, are there any additional agenda revisions?
Yes, Mayor Coombs, on Thursday you received revised items for item 9J, which was the 129 South Main property, that was updated on the web. Tonight at your desk, there should have been a revised agreement for item 9P. The agreement specifies that the city will use Colorado Community Health Alliance funding for a contractor to provide behavioral health services to the mobile integrated health program clients. Rather than the, these are the changes, rather than the city staff position to provide these services. It also clarifies that CCHA will issue payments to the city on a quarterly basis. I'm only telling you that about the amendments because staff does not plan to pull this item from the consent agenda. But those are the changes that you see in that document, okay? And that's it.
Alright, thank you. City manager, is there any reports?
Yes, Mayor Council, I wanted to let you know that we were just notified today that the airport has been registered as an aviation development zone. So if you'll recall, we applied for that, and what it does is it provides a state income tax credit of $1,200 per new employee of an aviation manufacturing business located within that area. And to qualify, a company must have at least 10 full-time employees to take advantage of this. And so it really, from an economic development perspective, it is a really good designation for our community in terms of bringing manufacturing jobs to Longmont.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, I guess we'll do public invited to be heard. First person on the list is Joan Peck. Please come down and state your name and address for the record.
Spruce Avenue. And I'm here to speak to the general business item number 11A, conservation easements on city open space properties. First of all, I would like to thank Mayor Coombs, City Council, City Manager Harold Domingos, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for allowing us to bring this issue to tonight's agenda. On August, in August of 2000, the residents of Longmont voted to tax themselves to purchase open space. And they wanted it purchased for, according to their ordinance, conservation of natural resources, including forest lands, rangelands, agricultural land, acquire recharge areas, aqua, I can't say that, and surface waters. They also wanted it to preserve natural areas, wildlife habitat, wetlands, agriculture, and visual corridors, district parks that are devoted to low-impact recreational uses. Also stated in the ordinance is that the open space was to be used as a buffer between and around municipalities and community services. Buffer zones between residential and non-residential development. And once we acquire this, according to item J on the ordinance, the open space may be used only for purposes set forth above. What the ordinance did not say, and is why we are here tonight, is that it did not state that open space could not be sold. So that has become more of an issue as we go forward with future city councils, and hopefully not the present city councils. So in order to correct this gap, we are asking for you to please start a conversation with the Boulder County Commissioners to put a conservation easement on all of our open space, present and future acquisitions, to prevent it from being sold. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kelly Mahoney?
Good evening, my name is Kelly Mahoney and I live at 708 Bluegrass Drive, 80503. I'm speaking on Agenda 9N. City Council, our elected officials, please do not approve and authorize our mayor to sign a contract with Kaplan-Kirsch &amp; Rockwell LLP. Why? Number one, this action is a direct attack on me, a voting, taxpaying citizen of the city of Longmont who has legitimate concerns of safety due to the erratic and unmonitored flight paths pilots take when flying in and around the Longmont Airport. And I do not want my complaints to go unheard because of lawyers being involved. Almost daily, there are new stories about aircraft crashing, landing into houses surrounding airports, just like Longmont around the country. I've trapped airplanes, including Maohai skydiving planes, descending at 100 feet in three seconds, going 80 miles an hour, all while the aircraft is only 300 feet above my house, I could see their eyes. They are seconds from disaster coming through my windows, living room windows. Why is this continuing to happen? I've reported these issues, and Mr. Barth has admitted that these pilots can and are able to fly higher over my house. However, may I add that my house, as of July 23rd, 2014, is not in the recommended flight path. I have no idea what the flight paths are right now, and I question whether the pilots do, because those recommended flight paths are no longer posted on the new city website. Please take an action to post those on the website. Number two, the second reason for not signing on these attorneys is because the contract has numerous questionable points. A, there is no limit to compensation to this firm. B, no department is named that will be using these attorneys. C, Contract Section 1.8, paraphrasing, attorneys work when they want to work. D, Mr. John Putnam has an office in Denver. Is travel to Longmont considered a necessary out-of-town reimbursable expense? I could only assume yes. E, now that we're talking money, this firm will cost $395 an hour, equates to $3,160 a day, $15,800 for a 40-hour week. I challenge you, City Council and Airport Manager, Tim Barth, does the airport operations bring that much money in taxes and leasing fees? Third reason for not going forward with signing on Kaplan-Kirsch &amp; Rockwell is because I do not want my rights taken away. I believe that Tim Barth would love to put an easement on noise complaints to cover all of southwest Longmont. Let's work together.
Thank you. Tracy Hallward?
I'm Tracy Hallward, 2131 Steel Street, and I have an entourage. Mayor Coombs, members of City Council, we are here to just kind of reiterate, I know you've mentioned before, that we're really, really excited about the possibility of bringing curbside composting to Longmont. And we have, a group effort has made a holiday card for all of you. The cards in the very center were made by Girl Scout troop 4580, and we have a few representatives here, and they're actually going to speak to you tonight. And the cards around the outside are made by residents of Casa de la Asparanza. And then there are over 50 members of Citizens for Curbside Composting that have also signed the card. And we were going to add the names of the 350-plus people we have on petition so far, but we decided not to. But we would just like to hope that in the coming year, when this comes forward, you guys will think about allowing curbside composting in Fort Collins, I mean in Longmont, sorry, sorry! Otherwise, you're going to make all these young people very sad.
Thank you. So next up, we have Maya and Clara.
My name is Maya Larry and I live at 1337 Missouri Avenue.
My name is Clara Bamford and I have no idea what my address is.
We're from Girl Scout troop 4580, and we think that curbside compost is a great idea for Longmont because it's great for the earth and we can save 50% of stuff getting thrown away.
And for example, one reason is if you had a banana and you composted your banana peel, that banana peel could be used to make another banana. that banana peel could be used to make another banana.
If you took that banana peel and threw it away, it would just sit there and rot in the dump.
It wouldn't actually rot, it would just stay there, actually.
That is all.
Thank you.
Sorry, just slow tonight. Good evening, members of City Council and Mayor Coombs. I am here just to congratulate you on bringing back the workforce housing update and to continue to consider the needs of the workforce housing population in our community. Although the economy seems to be on the upswing, there's still a dark side to that. There's, of course, you know this, shrinking supply of homes and apartments affordable to low-income and even middle-income families. We're taking the pulse of this every day at the hour center, and our caseworkers reporting that they are seeing one-bedroom apartments going for $1,000 a month, and this is putting quite a strain on their work. Because often when people are in financial need, we actually recommend that they downsize. People aren't finding units to downsize. There's really nowhere for them to go or to decrease the expenses in their homes. And because of this, we are finding more families who are homeless and now doubling up with others. In the new year, we'll be starting to take some more data, perhaps will be helpful as you all continue to study this issue in our community. But I really think it's important that we continue to keep this at the forefront of the issues that we consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Picked up a hitchhiker on my way to Lafayette Sunday, so he hadn't told me his name yet, so I can't introduce him. City Council Mayor, Strider Benston, 951 Seventeenth Avenue. First, I'd like to second Joan Peck's comments about the open space. I recall one of the better city council presentations I've heard was about eight or 10 years ago, Commissioner Pearlman spoke about open space at that time. And he particularly talked about flying over, and you could actually see Longmont. You see this megalopolis over there called Denver that the tentacles keep spreading. But Longmont actually was a definable and findable space. And then we had the Life Bridge issue, and then the flagstone, farstone, you know, flagpole stuff. So we've had a lot of stuff to deal with, but we do not want space, open space that was for wetlands and wildlife habitat being sold to developers. They have other areas they can look into. Also wanted to comment on that, the Cromnibus bill that just kind of went through the Congress, a way to sneak in really, really dangerous legislation with no debate by putting out on a mandatory spending bill. That really corrupts our entire governmental process. And one of the, one thing, a corollary to that, one that just came through, the anti-suicide bill, the one to protect vets, give them more psychological care and access and treatment. One man is able to prevent that from happening. What was it, you know, $22 million? Well, we have 22 vets commit suicide every day, 8,000 a year, and Congress will not give a little trickle to give them any access to psychological health care. We need, the public needs to wake up and get more involved, and you guys are doing a pretty good job here. And I just, I just would like to see our education and media system in this country be more concerned about how our country actually functions. So, thank you much.
Thank you. Kimberly Gibbs?
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of Council. My name is Kim Gibbs, and I live at 7468 Mount Sherman Road. On behalf of Citizens for Quiet Skies, I would like to comment on Agenda Item 9N regarding a proposal to hire the Kaplan-Kirsch &amp; Rockwell Law Firm to provide special counsel on airport matters. Kaplan-Kirsch &amp; Rockwell has significant experience and expert knowledge in the field of aviation law. Over the past few years, I have read several of their publications, including The Guide to Airport Noise Rules and Use Restrictions. It's written in plain English, so the ordinary citizens can understand it. Kaplan-Kirsch also, they represented the City of Naples Airport Authority in a high-profile court case involving a ban on Stage Two aircraft. I've studied the Naples case and found their work to be very impressive. In 2000, the Naples Airport Authority banned the operation of all Stage Two jets, Stage Two being those older, noisier jets. They did this to protect the community from excessive aircraft noise. In doing so, they followed the procedure established by the 1990 Airport Noise and Capacity Act, ANCA. I think we all have some familiarity with that by now. The FAA, not surprisingly, determined that the ban was unreasonable unless violated an AIP grant assurance. The FAA suspended the airport's grant funding, and the airport appealed the decision. Ultimately, the court ruled in favor of Naples and concluded that the airport had introduced ample evidence to justify the ban on Stage Two jets. What were the lessons learned from Naples? First, clearly, the FAA had overstepped their authority. But what else? Does the city have the authority to adopt reasonable noise-based regulations? I hope you will ask Mr. Putnam these questions so that we can hear from an expert. While there is no question that Kaplan-Kirsch is well-qualified, many of us are skeptical and concerned about the city's true motive for hiring them. Does the city wish to extend airport leases to 25 and 30 years? This is not in the best interests of the people who live here, and we will vigorously oppose that effort. Do you plan to finally address the airport noise problem? We certainly hope so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Shelley Basman, and I share the surface rights at 3414 Lakeview Circle. Joe couldn't be here tonight too, so I'm here for two of us. Joe and I deeply value our Longmont open spaces. We're proud and grateful to live in a city that, in 2000, voted to tax ourselves to acquire city open space for recreational uses and wildlife, wetland preservation. But inadvertently, a statement was omitted from that ordinance in that it didn't say that open space cannot be sold for development. So tonight, please vote to correct that inadvertent omission, and please vote to instruct the city staff, initiate discussions with Boulder County Commissioners, to place conservation easements on all present, see, open space, and all future acquisitions for open space. Conservation easements would guarantee that the original intent of the Longmont Open Space ordinance is guaranteed forever. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I guess it's time for...
Second reading. First item on your agenda is Ordinance 2014-71, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the City of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2014. There is no formal staff presentation on this item.
Is there any questions from Council before I open up the public hearing? Okay, I'll now open the public hearing on Ordinance 2014-70. Is there anybody from the audience who want to speak at this time? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on Ordinance 2014-70. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move passage of Ordinance 2014-71.
Okay, it's been moved to second, let's vote. That passes 7 to 0.
Okay, the next item on your agenda is Ordinance 2014-72, a bill for an ordinance establishing a charge of 75 cents per month for emergency telephone service 911 for wired and wireless subscribers in Longmont for the calendar year 2015. This is the same rate as was charged in 2014. And there is no staff presentation.
Is there any questions from Council before I open up the public hearing? Heard is anybody from the public that'd like to speak on Ordinance 2014-72? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on Ordinance 2014-72. Councilmember Hamper?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move Ordinance 2014-72.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second. Councilmember Bailey?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm going to vote for this, but just, I got a phone call from Mr. Schroeder after our last vote when we increased, he's 82-years-old, from Germany, served in our military for, I think, almost a decade, served during wartime. And he wanted to, he kept me on the phone for about 30 minutes and told me that we need to be careful as council members, to be mindful of seniors when we increase rates. He said that the water, the increase over five years of 40%, 50% in our water fees are going to hurt him and a lot of our seniors. So I know that this is important to, you know, our emergency services, but we have increased rates as a council on several things, and this will be the last time I vote for a rate increase on anything. No, I know, it's a 75, I know, but it's still a 75-cent increase in 911 fees. But, yes, it is. It's a bill for an ordinance establishing charges 75 cents per month for emergency telephone service for wired and wireless subscribers in Longmont for the calendar year 2015.
It's the same as what it was in 2014?
I know, but there's no other time to do this, and I didn't want to wait till council comments. But the, but in general, when we're voting to increase things that show up, renewing, et cetera, I'm going to be more committed to making sure we cut costs before we start increasing rates. Just kind of toss it in the glove, the gauntlet, whatever you want to say.
Okay, we've got a motion, it's been seconded. That passes 7 to 0.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is the Consent Agenda, and there are quite a few items, so I'll read them. Item 9A is Ordinance 2015-01, a bill for an ordinance amending Section 3.04.885 of the Longmont Municipal Code, adopting amended and restated pension plans. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for January 13th, 2015. Item 9B is Ordinance 2015-02, a bill for an ordinance designating 1241 Third Avenue the GW Butler House as a local historic landmark. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for January 13th, 2015. 9C is Ordinance 2015-03, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 15.03 of the Longmont Municipal Code regarding the mixed-use zoning district. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for January 13th, 2015. 9D is Ordinance 2015-04, a bill for an ordinance approving a concept plan amendment for the Kubot Archdiocese property. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for January 13th, 2015. Item 9E is Ordinance 2015-05, a bill for an ordinance amending Title 11, Chapter 1104, Section 64 of the Longmont Municipal Code regarding child restraint systems. Ordinance, public hearing and second reading scheduled for January 13th. Item 9F are two resolutions. First one is Resolution 2014-110, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city, the county of Boulder, and the Golden Land Company, LLC, for the Heron Lake Relief Channel Agreement, and Resolution 2014-111, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the owners of the Zueck and Turner Ditch for a ditch-crossing license agreement. Item 9G is Resolution 2014-112, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Regional Transportation District for employee ecopasses for 2015. Item 9H is Resolution 2014-113, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the town of Vestas Park, the cities of Fort Collins and Loveland, and the Platte River Power Authority for mutual aid power operations. Item 9I is Resolution 2014-114, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Colorado Department of Transportation for grant funding for pedestrian crossing Undercover Road. Item 9J, again, is two resolutions. First one is Resolution 2014-115, authorizing an agreement between the city and 129 South Main Street LLC for the purchase of real property for the St. Brain Creek Improvement Project, and Resolution R. 2014-116, authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as 131 South Main and part of 129 South Main Street to 129 South Main Street LLC. Item 9K is Resolution 2014-117, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and county of Boulder, city of Boulder, and Foothills United Way for a regional grant management system collaboration agreement. Item 9L is Resolution R. 2014-118, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city and state of Colorado Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. Item 9M is Resolution R. 2014-119, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado Division of Criminal Justice for a victim of crime assistance grant. Item 9N is approve and authorize the mayor to sign a special counsel contract with Kaplan-Kirsch &amp; Rockwell LLP for aviation law issues. Item 9O is approve and authorize the mayor to sign economic development agreements with the Longmont Area Economic Council, Visit Longmont, and the Small Business Development Center. Item 9P is approve and authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with the Colorado Community Health Alliance for behavioral health services for Longmont's mobile integrated health program. Item 9Q is accept four capital improvement program amendments approved by the city manager. Item 9R is to approve six capital improvement program amendments. Those are listed on the agenda. Item 9S is suspend the council rule of Procedure 25 and set the 2015 city council meeting dates for regular and study sessions as proposed at your last study session. Item 9T is approve transfers of insurance proceeds from the self-insurance fund to various funds. And staff, we'd like you to pull Item F and N for additional discussion.
Councilmember Moore?
I'd like to also pull Item Number O for some clarification on wording.
O? You said O?
F, N, and O.
Councilmember Bailey?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'd like to pull G, if we could.
Councilmember Finley?
I don't want to pull anything. I'd like to move that we approve the Consent Agenda minus F, G, N, and O. Did I cover them all?
Yes. You did. It's been moved in second, and let's vote. Okay, that passes 7 to 0. So let's start with that.
Dale Radamaker is here to make this, answer questions.
Mayor Coombs and members of Council and Dale Radamaker, Public Works and Natural Resources. And the item, Item F tonight, I did just want to say a few words on that. And if I can get this going here. So Council, this item, the Heron Lake Relief Channel Project is a project that some of you may recall we identified on about September 14th or so of 2013, as the flood was occurring through Longmont. And essentially what this was is an identification of an opportunity to be able to intercept a... and cut off the flood flows that heavily damaged those areas of Longmont, in particular the Champion Greens, the Greens, and the Valley subdivisions. And this is an arrow photograph taken on September 13th. And the area in question here, of course, we're looking east to the city, and it's this flow of water that I'm showing with the cursor that essentially flowed out of the St. Brain to the west of 75th Street, through the Heron Lake park and pond areas, across the railroad into the Greens and the Champion Greens and the Valley subdivision. And so what we committed to doing then was to do everything we can to ensure that that doesn't occur again in the future. This project is our attempt to do that. And essentially what this is, is, let me go back a slide if I can, previous. Right in this area right here, again, where I'm moving the cursor, this is Heron Lake. This is the railroad, to orient yourself. The main channel of the St. Brain is clear off to the right side of the photograph here. And it's this area right through here, where I'm drawing the cursor, is where we're looking to construct this channel, to essentially intercept this flow and redirect it to the south, back to the St. Brain. And so that took quite a bit of work to pull together the agreement. And I do want to acknowledge our staff. Larry Wayo and our engineering staff worked very hard to pull together the plans and the documents on this. Our partners in this project are Boulder County Parks and Open Space. I want to acknowledge and thank their staff, David Bell and Ron Stewart, for working with us to get this done. It does cross Boulder County open space property on both the north end and the south end. And then finally, I want to thank Reggie Golden and his family for supporting us on this, as obviously the channel crosses their property. It's, they're the private property owner in between Heron Lake and the St. Brain. Some of the interesting attributes of this project are that we have the channel agreement that calls for the construction of this channel, which, by the way, is ready to go out to bid in the next couple of weeks. We hope to start construction on this in January, late January, in order to have it completed before April 1st, which is the time that we need to start irrigation water coming into the area, and obviously is ahead of spring runoff. And so that's the tight timeline that we're working on. We're also working on that timeline because of issues with threatened endangered species, in particular the Preville's mouse, which has been found in the area, which is currently hibernating. And so we want to keep the mouse hibernating while we build the project, so as not to have a take, if you will, which is not a good thing. And so we have coordinated this project, not only locally with the property owners in the county, but also with the federal government, with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and the Fish and Wildlife Service. One of the interesting attributes of this is that the property shown here in brown is the property owned by Reggie Golden and his family, and it is slated to be mined in the future. There is a mining permit on the property for gravel mining. And the interesting thing we're going to be able to do is that as that property moves from its current state to a mine, to a reclaimed area, is that instead of this channel that we're going to construct now, it will be, the floodwater cutoff, if you will, will be done through a natural area, through wetlands, that are going to be created on the property. And I think that's one of the best ways to do it. You let the natural contours of the ground. And again, I want to thank Reggie and Barb Brunk for working with us on that in order to get the mining plan to be able to accommodate that future flow. We've also gotten this agreement that we're building it now, the mining may take several years to occur, and as the mining occurs, we expect the channel to move around, because there are going to be mining in that area. And so what we've agreed is that you can do that, that's a good thing, so long as you preserve the 1,800 CFS capacity to be able to always convey that flood flow south instead of it coming east into those neighborhoods. The other aspect of this is that there is a ditch agreement with the Zouek and Turner ditch owners. Zouek and Turner is an unincorporated ditch, which means there is no ditch company per se, it's a series of owners that have the water right attached to their property. And so that's always an added challenge, if you will, because you have to get every individual owner to agree, as opposed to just the president of the company. And again, Barb Brunk and folks have taken the lead on that. They know the folks out there as well as anybody, and are doing a great job of getting that done for us. The Boulder County Commissioners acted on these agreements at their business meeting last Thursday, and they unanimously approved it, and they too are looking forward to this project. This project also helps the county, because it rebuilds the embankment on Heron Lake up at the northern end, and it also builds a defined spillway, which the lake didn't have before. And so this defined spillway is going to obviously empty into the channel that we're going to be constructing to the south. It's also going to have a drainage system installed as part of it, because over the years, these ponds have sort of been the ever-filling ponds, and spilling water out of them is sort of nuisance water. That's been problematic for the farmers in the area, because frankly, you don't need water when you're trying to put hay up and you're trying to do different things. And so this project is also taking care of that. And so the county is funding that portion of the project, and they're also funding a portion of the improvements that are on county open space property. Lastly, I just want to let you know that we are also working to try to secure federal funding for this. That has not been going as well as we would hope. Frankly, the timing of our need to get this project done is not syncing up as well as we would like to think on our CDVD-R funds. We have met, though, with Don Sandoval at DOLA, and he is trying to work with us to see if we can expedite the funding of the project through CDVD. We also may have an opportunity to get FEMA hazard mitigation funding. And so we're looking at all those options, but we're not slowing down to get this done. As you know, we still have the temporary flood barriers up on Airport Road. I think our commitment is to get this built as soon as we can, and to relieve that anxiousness, I guess is the way I would put it, for the folks living in those neighborhoods. So with that, there are two resolutions for you to act on as part of this item. The first resolution is approving the intergovernmental agreement related to the channel agreement itself, and the second one is the intergovernmental agreement for the ditch crossing agreement. So with that, I'll take questions if you have them.
Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you. So there is, building these improvements will not have any impacts on water rights or anything-
Correct.
-that we would have to do in water court or anything else.
Correct.
It just allows for an overflow.
Right. Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Levinson, you're correct. And in fact, what we're doing as part of the ditch crossing agreement is protecting that water right, so that those folks have the ability to convey water down the ditch and irrigate as they had. There aren't any other intervening water rights, say with the Heron Lake ponds or anything that are impacted.
And it wouldn't be affecting our, I mean, would we be putting too much water into the St. Brain?
So the, "too much" is a, is a-
A relative term.
-is a term of ours, right? We're designing this again for the 100-year flood. I think it would also work quite well in even a larger flood than that, because frankly, we've experienced that, and I think it'd be short-sighted to just stop there. I think what we have to do is we look at our overall channel improvements in partnership with the county and the property owners, is to ensure that there is capacity in the St. Brain to convey the 100-year storm. And so from this point, as you go downstream, you quickly get to Airport Road. We know the Airport Road structures can pass the 100-year flows. And so again, it's respecting and trying to keep the flows in the main channel of the river, as opposed to sort of these renegade flows that are outside of any floodplain that we knew of. The other thing is, is building it in this way avoids the need to channelize the St. Brain in what I would consider to be, especially in this area west of the city, that's predominantly open spaceland, in a more environmentally challenging method. We're essentially going across a farmland field and also across property that's slated to be gravel mined. And so I think it's got all those attributes to it. I think it's the most economically feasible, as well as environmentally sensitive approach to get this done.
May I call it?
Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you. I'm not, I'm not sure, I haven't had a chance to discuss this with you, but I'm not sure if you're aware of some of the rumblings coming out of the state engineer's office around retention of water flows, where the state engineer may want to get involved if you're diverting or holding water for 72 hours or more, irregardless of whether or not you're saving lands downstream from catastrophic flooding. So would this have any impact on what the state engineer seems to want to be doing? Because there, the idea was that you should just, no matter what the volume of water, even in perhaps a burn scar area, as occurred down south, just freely let the water run over wherever it's going to run, and allow it to recharge that land.
So Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Levinson, I don't believe this reaches the level of the state engineer either in the, in the design of the channel, and it certainly doesn't interfere with the role of the state engineer to ensure that, absent a storage decree, that you're not storing water. And I think that's what you might be referring to. And of course, in this case, we are conveying it, I would say, quite rapidly and quite efficiently back to the river. I think the state engineer is also dealing with a number of other issues where they have high groundwater, and they're trying to deal with that downstream and east of us. And again, this will not impact that either.
Okay, I'll see any further questions. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move Resolution 2014-110.
All right, it's been moved in second, and let's vote. That passes seven to zero. Councilmembers, second?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move Resolution 2014-111.
It's been moved in second, and let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Mayor Coombs, the next pulled item was item G, which is Resolution 2014-112, and Nick Wolfram is here to address questions on that.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I've only got a question, and that is, why don't we get rid of the ecopass and just give every employee that wants it a pass, since the average cost is $212.10, whereas we can just buy RTD regional pass for 176 bucks?
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley. The regional pass provides certain services versus other services, so it's easier to do the ecopass as far as providing all services along with that. It's also less administrative work as far as trying to collect and distribute that. Cards are pretty much already issued for people, so it's, there's less administrative cost involved in that.
So I thought, I thought they were still paying, if you have an ecopass, you still pay. It's awesome, good ringtone. The, was that The Incredibles?
It was The Incredibles.
All right, name that tune.
I thought it was off.
Yes. So my question is, so I'm noticing here in the packet, it says that you still have to pay to go to Denver, even with an ecopass, right?
No.
No?
No, you pay to go to-
Just DIA?
$2.50 for the airport ride.
And so everything else. And so what exactly don't you get with the RT regional pass that you do with the ecopass? Do we know that?
With a regional pass, I don't believe you'd get local service, for example, down in Denver.
Okay, all right. And staff, what would you do?
What would I do?
Yeah.
I would move with the ecopass. And it's also a lot less of an issue of us buying regional passes, distributing them to all employees. Employees have already acquired the, that you'd also most likely be buying a lot of regional passes that might not be used, depending on how many of those you buy.
My original idea was just, somebody checks the box or tells you and just put in their paycheck. But if you're saying that they get more service and they'll use it, I just wanted to make sure we're not wasting the money.
Okay.
Then with that, there's no red lights, I move that we actually pass R. 2014-112, a resolution. I just moved that.
All right. Okay. That passes seven to zero.
Next item is to, is the special counsel contract with Captain Kirsten Rockwell, and Tim Barth is here to introduce this.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council, Tim Barth, City's Airport Manager. Before you this evening is a contract for special counsel for Captain Kirsten Rockwell to assist the airport staff and our city attorney's office through some legal issues. One of the reasons that we put out this request for outside legal counsel, as the council may know, we're trying to change the direction of the airport. We're trying to go for a little bit more business development, economic development, and manufacturing. And I think as Harold let the council know tonight, we accomplished our first step by being designated as an aviation development zone. So as we move forward with those plans, we felt it was necessary at a staff level to bring on some upside counsel that specializes in aviation to do a review of all the leases at the airport, to make sure that they are in compliance with federal grant assurances, that they are protecting the city's best interests. And in addition, I believe the council knows, well, I know Councilmember Santos definitely knows, for the past 18 months, we have been working diligently with the Airport Advisory Board to update our minimum standards and rules and regulations. As we move forward with that, keeping in mind how we want to change the direction of the airport, we thought it would be appropriate, again, to have outside legal counsel take a look at these standards and regulations, to ensure that they are compliant with federal aviation regulations, as well as our grant assurances moving forward. And that document hasn't been updated in probably 15 years, so it'll be good to get another set of eyes on that. And lastly, we do have some noise concerns, and I believe we're going to bring Captain Kirsten Rockwell on to take a look at some of our noise abatement procedures that we have in place, and also offer staff some advice. Captain Kirsten Rockwell is a well-known firm. I don't believe there's another person in my position in another airport across the country that doesn't know who KKK and RR is. We're fortunate that they have an office here in Denver. They also have an Washington DC office. I've seen them at various trade industry shows and conferences throughout my career. And not to give a complete overview of their firm, I do have Mr. John Putnam here this evening, who can speak a little bit more authoritatively about his firm, kind of give you an overview of what they do, and answer any questions that the council may have. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Putnam.
Thank you very much, and good evening, Mayor Coombs and City Council. My name is John Putnam with Captain Kirsten Rockwell, and I'm based here in our Denver office, but live in Boulder County. And we are a small, focused law firm. We have 17 attorneys in Denver and in Washington DC, and our biggest practice is airport law. And we're the largest airport law firm in the country right now. So as an example, just in the last couple of weeks here in the month of December, I've worked on airport issues everywhere from Kele'alo Airport in Hawaii, and Truckee Tahoe in California, to City of Phoenix, City of Philadelphia, City of Las Vegas. And we deal with the whole range of airport issues. One of the things that we can bring to the table is the experience of other airports around the country, as well as those working relationships with the Federal Aviation Administration. I can bring the efficiency of not having to learn airport law. We do it all the time. Those regulations are stacked up on my desk and welcomed. So we'll certainly bring you that efficiency. And just to address one of the concerns that was raised earlier, I do work for plenty of other Colorado airports. I don't charge for my time traveling to and from my office or my home to those places. I think it'd be inappropriate and probably unethical, so that's not something I would do and wouldn't see that in the future. And on a personal note, as much as I enjoy having a chance to go and visit airports around the country, I really like working in my backyard. My whitewater canoe partner lives in Longmont. I love Longmont, so I'm excited about this opportunity to work with you. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I don't have a question, but I have a comment. And that comment is directed toward the young lady- comment is directed toward the young lady, the young lady right there in the black.
Hi.
The, the, I'm going to vote for this, but because of the following. And it also addresses Ms. Kimberly Gibbs' comments. The first time I heard that the airport was an issue, living in northeast Longmont, which we don't get a lot of plane traffic up there, at least it doesn't, you don't hear it to the extent you do around the airport, I first became aware that apparently the airport bugs people, at least some people. And so lately, there was a lawsuit filed, Citizens for Quiet Skies and Mile High Skydiving. We are legally not involved, but politically and socially, and as a community, we certainly are. We have all gotten the emails over the last year, two years, about concerned citizens, three years, but last year, last year or two, really picking it up, Ms. Gibbs. So yeah, we get those, and we can't respond to them all, but we do read them. And so we have heard for the last three years that we cannot do certain things as a city. Our legal staff does not have the expertise necessary to address this issue. We don't think that citizens, although well-read and well-versed, we don't know if you're right or wrong. We've all got our individual opinions regarding the airport and what we can and cannot do. So the only way to resolve and get down to brass tacks is bring in somebody who knows, get in there and start asking some questions about what are we going to do about this problem. So if there's any, if there's any ifs, ands, or buts about why we're doing this, it's not to get you to be quiet or stop emailing. Although on a occasion on Saturday morning, that would be nice. But no, it's because we need legal advice in order to address issues at the airport and other, other things. But addressing your concerns specifically, I don't speak for council, but I do speak for myself and probably would echo the sentiments of many of my fellow council members, that we're bringing in somebody to help us address the issues that continue to get raised. So that is what I am imagining this fine gentleman and his, and his 16 colleagues there at Kaplan-Kirsch and Rockwell LLP will provide to our fine city. So I just wanted to put that on the record.
I'm also going to support it. I know we have a great legal team here within our city staff, but you can't be experts on every phase of legal issues. And at least they're smart enough to know that they need help, and that's great. I mean, that's why, that makes them great. They know when to park, when to get some extra help. And so for that reason, I'm going to support it. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. With those comments, apparently there's one more, but I'm going to go ahead and move this on. And then the other, the other council member can comment. I move to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the attached special counsel contract with Kaplan-Kirsch and Rockwell LLP.
Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Mr. Putnam, my questions are not really for you, but I do appreciate you stating publicly that you're not going to charge us your well-deserved for expertise fee, but not well-deserved for driving a car. So I do appreciate that because that was actually one of the questions I had when I saw that line about travel. I, I just, my concerns really, and I know from speaking with city attorney May this afternoon, this is to be fleshed out, some idea of cost containment and knowing, knowing when various people at the different levels of billing and expertise in your firm will be engaged. And, and there wasn't, I understand that there was really not anything in the contract talking about, you know, percentages of, of time. But we have seen that in other RFPs that I've been involved with reviewing. So I just would like to make sure that we be aware. And I, and I don't know whether or not we have an upper number. That's my concern. I mean, I'm not sure what the budget for this is, and if staff could give me a feeling if this is a, an open-ended contract, you know, if what our anticipation of costs are. Because I know you're, you know, when you know an area of law very well, you can, probably you have all those big stacks of things memorized, and I appreciate that. And a quick answer that would take our staff much more time. And, and I think there's an efficiency to have a, a subject matter expert. But I'm just concerned, are we looking at $10,000? Are we looking at $20,000? There's nothing in the contract we're going to be voting on that even gives us an idea of that. So I, I don't know if you can respond to that, or if it's not appropriate for you, if our city attorney could.
Mayor and Council Eugene May, city attorney, and Councilmember Levison, we did not want to presume council approval, and so we did not work on a scope of work for Mr. Putnam and his firm. And I would also say, a lot of things that could happen relating to the airport are not within our control. We've seen Quiet Skies sue Mile High. They have threatened to sue us. We don't know what they're going to do. We've had some concerns and discussions with Mile High. We don't know what they're going to do. Right here, we're trying to get prepared and to put the city in the best position to respond to those, regardless of what happens, whether it be litigation, whether it be negotiation, whether it be an FAA administrative proceeding. Once we do, if council does approve a special counsel in this instance, we would sit down with Mr. Putnam and create a work plan and a special counsel action plan with a budget for specific projects. Airport manager Barth mentioned a few of them. You know, we, we do have this ongoing issue with Mile High. We are looking at the leases, tenant leases, and we are looking at rules and reg amendments at the airport. And I would imagine each of those would be a separate special counsel action plan, looking to efficiently utilize the expertise of Mr. Putnam, as well as our other resources like J-Aviation and city staff. And so, you know, every time this would be new for the city to have aviation special counsel, it's about developing new working relationship and discussing with Mr. Putnam and getting some comfort on how best to communicate, how most efficiently to communicate. And certainly, our airport manager is our staff expert, and he can help guide, you know, how we utilize those resources effectively, efficiently to protect the interests of the city.
Councilmember Christensen?
It's my understanding from one reading, and I can't find it now, but that the final sign-off on your work would be Eugene, and I'm not clear on whether that would be, the other sign-off would be the city manager or the airport manager. I think it'd be more appropriate to have that be the city manager, given that this is, is that correct?
It could be me in the process. We're all involved in the conversation, so obviously I will be part of all of the conversations as we continue to move forward.
Right. But I, I think it would be more appropriate to have you be the final sign-off. Anyway, I, I'm very impressed with your firm and the expertise and the work that you've done, that you did for Naples. And I'm hoping that we can resolve some of the numerous problems out there with your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Combs.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Just a comment. I can hardly walk through my neighborhood without people stopping me and complaining about Mile High. I happen to live about a mile from the airport. And that being said, I mean, over 90% of complaints the airport's gotten this year, around 1,600 complaints, 90% of them have been about skydiving operations, albeit some people complained multiple times. So with that in mind, just wanted to highlight that so you're, you're aware of it. I do want to put the airport in a good position for the future of Longmont. It's definitely going to be an asset and, you know, for us for economic drivers, for jobs and growth. And keeping a viable airport right now, I would, my opinion is, the airport barely hangs on. Without its grants, it would be really bad shape. So having more economic development out there, more revenue going to the airport is a good thing. And fix Mile High, and we'll all be happy. Okay, this-
Welcome.
Thank you. Everybody's done talking? Do you, can I have a motion?
Yeah.
Oh, we've had a motion. It's, that's right, it was before everybody. It's been, second, let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Mayor Combs, your next item is O, which is the economic development agreements. And Sean Lewis can address any questions you might have.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Here's a couple of word items in the LAEC and the SBDC contract, having to do with the wording of nonprofit in the opening paragraph and not for, not-for-profit later on in the document. Do we know which is the proper wording?
Mayor and Councilmember Moore, I did a little quick research. The statutory term is nonprofit. I did a search in case law. They seem to be used interchangeably even by the Colorado Supreme Court, referring to them as not-for-profit, as well as nonprofit. If you want to get technical, I'd go with the statutory definition. We can make that change to the contract if you'd like.
Thank you. And then in the LAEC contract, Exhibit B, points four, five, and six, stated as review and modify. I would think we'd want to have review and consider changes in both of those, in four and five. When you say review and modify, I get an implication that there is direction coming from LAEC. And on number six, solicit and incorporate is the opening phrase. And I would think the same issues applies. We'd, I would suggest we go with solicit for consideration on that line. Exhibit B.
Is there a page number in our packet?
Oh, let's see if I have it open.
Try 650. Mine is 650.
Oh, items number four and five and six. Yeah, so the suggestions were for, for items four and five, change review and modify to review and consider. And for item number six, solicit and incorporate to solicit for consideration.
Mayor Combs, Councilmember Moore, we're glad to make those changes.
Councilmember Levison?
I also had a small wording suggestion in the original body of the contract. It talks about under item two, which is on page, that's page two of the contract, and I guess it would be under Article One, Section Two, talks about the various bullet points about specific services. The third bullet point on small business support, it's actually small business, really development, because a lot of those new services for small business, retail especially, are the leggy program, which is really a development program as opposed to a support program. So I would just suggest we could just add development or just remove support and put development, either, either one. And I guess my other comment really is that, you know, we do have numbers on, on the LAEC contract about how many visits, how much participation out in the greater world, and holding events and such. But there doesn't seem to be any kind of firm performance measurements as far as, you know, all, you know, thus, all of these, these, the anticipation is that all of these efforts will result in, you know, some percent of, of job growth or retention, you know, demonstrating that there have been jobs retained, that there's been a modicum of success. And I think that, you know, in, in the increased amount of contract services, that it would be, you know, nice to have some kind of feeling for the fact that we're getting some success out of this relationship.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I wasn't going to mention it, but since we're here, we're making changes. I'd like to actually suggest that we change the illegal alien certificate to an undocumented immigrant certificate, both for the LAEC as well as the law award, just because I know that some people take offense to it. So, since we're making changes, with that.
Yeah.
Councilmember Bagley, I can look it up. I believe that's the term used in the statute. I'm almost positive.
And Mayor Combs, Councilmember Levison, we're glad to make that. I believe last year when we were working with the SBDC closely on this, they wanted references to small business development taken out. I think what we could do is say small business support and development, just to make sure there's not confusion that we want the LAEC to become a small business development center or anything like that. But we're glad to make that addition to that bullet point.
I guess, me, I'm just not understanding, but when you're supporting small business, aren't you helping them to develop? I guess I don't see the big distinction there myself.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, everyone's got their fingers dirty with changes and corrections. Councilmember Finsen, you want to go in?
No.
Oh, I'm, I'm good too. Plus, I believe the, we do get quarterly reports from LAEC, so sent to our email. And then also, I think the, the review of LAEC is renewing their contract. So I move that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign the economic, to sign economic development agreements with the Longmont Area Economic Council. Do we need to do these one at a time or all together? It's all in here together, Eugene.
Mayor and council, you can do it all together. I'm not sure what happened to all these discussion points and whether council agreed or not to make the changes.
I didn't hear any objections, so I guess consensus among the council. So again, to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the, to sign economic development agreements with the Longmont Area Economic Council, visit Longmont and the Small Business Development Center.
Okay, it's a motion.
As amended?
As suggested.
Yeah. Okay, let's vote. I did. No, Monty did. Excuse me. I threw.
There's a third or a fourth or fifth.
Okay, let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Mayor Combs, let me see. Then that was the last item pulled, so your next item of business is?
General business.
General business, conservation easements on city open space properties. And Dale Radamaker is here to make that presentation.
Mayor Combs and members council, Dale Radamaker, Public Works and National Resources. The item that we have for your consideration tonight is a item to look at the, an analysis to consider granting conservation easements over certain properties that were purchased with open space funds by the city. The map that I have pulled up on the, on the monitor is a map of those open space properties that the city has purchased. The ones that are in dark green are ones that we currently have conservation easements on. And, you know, the reason behind that typically was that conservation easements were granted in cases where both entities were- were granted in cases where both entities were either jointly purchasing the property, or there was a relationship either through funding or granting of dollars from another entity, and that's typically where that occurred. And so you can see, if you look, say, on the areas south of 119, a lot of the land down in that area, the Pacheco property, and some of the Schlegel properties, and some of the Sherwood properties have joint conservation easements on, a portion of the Sherwood doesn't, neither does the Collins property, or the Boulder Creek Estates property. Golden Farms does, as does our recently acquired land out at Rogers Grove, and of course, the Little Flower property up by Lake McIntosh. And so I think the staff was approached by some members of the community that wanted to buttress that long-term preservation of open space ground, in order to sort of fulfill the intent of the original ordinances and ballot issue that the public went to, and approved back in the early 2000s to acquire the open space property. And as such, what we, including in your communications, that we do believe this is a council policy direction for us to look at. We did suggest some issues that you might want to consider as you give that direction, and one of them would be that we would do sort of a property-by-property analysis to determine who might be the best partner to have a conservation easement with. One could be the county, other ones could be GOCO, other ones could be any other, of a long number of conservation groups that are in the business of doing that very thing of preserving land. I know there's a statewide agency that does that as well. And so we would recommend, again, if council believes this is something of interest, that we would go through that type of an analysis on a site-by-site basis, looking at sort of the unique features of any given property, and then trying to make some recommendations on that. We also believe that the development of conservation easement, the document itself is important, and that in order to preserve the city's ability to have municipal uses on those properties, is something that we would encourage that you at least look at, things like the ability for utility lines, roadways, and those kinds of things, if a road needs to be widened, that we don't necessarily, that is an issue that is retained by the city council to decide if that's appropriate or not. We also believe that the process is one that we would generally want to follow, our current code of Chapter 1452, which deals with the disposition of open space, that was an ordinance that we passed a few years back, which really calls for the council to refer this issue over to the Parks and Recreation Board for their consideration and recommendation to you. And so I, tonight, Gordon Pedro would like to speak with you about this issue, as would Sharon O'Leary. Oh, they're right behind me. And so I believe they would also like to address the council on this particular issue as well, before you have your overall discussion between yourselves. And Dan Wolford is here as our open space manager to answer any detailed questions that you might have. So if you have any questions for me, otherwise, I'd like to introduce Gordon.
Councilmember Levinson.
One thing I didn't understand from the couple of times I reviewed this, is generally there's some monetization of a conservation easement, so even though we have the open space purchase, because there was not a purchase of a conservation easement, would we be looking for some kind of monetary payment in exchange by whatever group decides that they're going to hold the easement?
Mayor Coombs and Councilman Levinson, I think that's part of the analysis. I do know that in some entities, you may have to pay them in order to have some sort of an overseer or management role. Our practice has been that a conservation easement typically is, well, not typically, it does represent an interest in the property, and it has been known to have some value, intrinsic value in that, and so I think that's also something that we need to be analyzed. We haven't done any of that work yet, so I can't really respond in detail.
Okay, I'll see, any other questions? Mayor Council, Gordon Pedro, 2639 Falcon Drive. Thank you for this opportunity to be part of a citizen presentation. In the year 2000, City Council referred Ordinance 2000-41 to the voters as both an opportunity to increase sales and use tax by the voters, and also to create an open space program. By approving Ordinance 2000-41, the voters made a very clear statement about open space. First off, they decided it was very important to them, because they agreed that they would increase sales and use tax, and pay more in order to have those open space program. They also made a very clear statement of intent, and I'll just very briefly hit a couple of paragraphs out of the ordinance, Section 2I, states, "Open space shall serve one or more of the following functions: preservation of natural areas, wildlife habitat, wetlands, agriculture, or visual corridors; linkages and trails; access to public lakes, streams, and other usable open space lands; stream corridors and scenic corridors along existing highways; conservation of natural resources, including but not limited to forest lands, rangelands, agricultural lands, aquifer recharge areas, and surface water; district parks devoted to low-impact recreation uses; implementing greenways and open space policies or strategies of the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan; urban shaping buffers between or around municipalities or community service areas and buffer zones between residential and non-residential developments." Those are the purposes in which the voters were saying, this is why we want to pay more, this is what we want our open space taxes used for. There's also one very clear limitation, it was in the very next paragraph, Section 2J, "Once acquired, open space may be used only for purposes set forth above." So I think that the citizens were very cognizant of what they were doing, they agreed that they were going to tax themselves more, and that they wanted some real benefits coming to this community, as they spent their money, or as we spent their money. In 2000, we missed making conservation easements a part of the ordinance. Hopefully, that was the biggest mistake I ever made in 19 years of city management here, but, "That opportunity can be easily corrected by placing conservation easements on the existing parcels that we have purchased, as indicated on the map, that do not currently have conservation easements on them, and by placing those conservation easements on additional properties that are acquired in the future." The other thing that the ordinance in 2000 was silent on was disposition of properties, because I don't think anybody anticipated that this council, future councils, would be disposing of property purchased for the open space program. But in 2011, because the Martin Street extension from Third to Highway 119 required some right-ofway from the Pavlakas open space, we had to adopt an ordinance to correct, or to make it clear how that open space that was used for a right-ofway would be dealt with, and how the open space program would be made whole. So Ordinance 2011-10 was adopted, it served the purposes of getting the Martin Street right-ofway issue dealt with, but it has some ambiguities in language, and is one of the other reasons why we think that it's important that we use the conservation easement process to make certain that our open space properties are protected. The Ordinance 2011-10 says, "Public purpose shall be determined by future councils. Net benefit to the open space program is not defined," and it refers to "transfer of open space lands to another city department." All of these are rather ambiguous, and difficult for us to anticipate what a future council may decide, and because we don't want to have that ambiguity, we think that this is a way of making certain that the purpose in which the properties were purchased is carried out in perpetuity, or if it's not going to be, and a council decides that there is a public purpose, and it's appropriate to consider disposing of those properties, that it be done with the conservation easement as a part of the property. So this is additional protection we're looking for. I do say, as Dale indicated, the exact entity that holds the conservation easement is not critical. I think that in some cases, Boulder County, which, as you see on this map, currently holds reciprocal conservation easements on several properties, if those properties were adjacent to some of those, it may be appropriate that they would be the one holding it. State, Division of Wildlife, Parks, or GOCO could hold the easements, or there are land trusts that may be appropriate to hold the easements. That's not the critical part, I think the critical thing is, the city council deal with this issue of conservation easements, so that the citizens are assured that the property is used for the purposes in which it was purchased. Ordinance 2000-41 recommended that the Parks Recreation Advisory Board be the policy body that recommends policy to the council. So in November, this citizens group, we went to the CRAB, and we laid out our desires to have them recommend to you that the conservation easements be instituted for the existing and future properties. And I just want to say one thing, maybe, sorry, last thing. Dale mentioned that it's important that conservation easements be dealt with appropriately, and with real thought. I just hope that it doesn't become so complicated that they never get done. There's certain things that can be done simply. A conservation easement that merely states that the property is being, for which it is being purchased, is the purpose that it will have a conservation easement, and that the LAACP be used as a guiding document that shows where water lines, and streets, and transportation corridors need to go, all of that can be wrapped together, hopefully in a way that these can come together expeditiously, but certainly not without thought. And Sharon O'Leary, the chair of the CRAB, is going to now talk about what CRAB decided, unless she has questions for me. Any questions for Mr. Pedro?
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and councilmembers, Sharon O'Leary, 534 Emery Street, I am the chairperson for the Parks Recreation and Open Space Board, and I'm here tonight to let you know that as a board, we voted unanimously to support Option 1, allowing conservation easement to present and future open space purchases, because we feel that it will provide the consistent preservation of the intent of the Longmont voters in the original open space ordinance. Presently, some of our open space land is protected due to funding through GOCO grants or landowners, joint landowners. So we felt that by supporting Option 1, you could close that gap to ensure that all open space land had equal protection through this conservation easement. I appreciate your time and thoughtful dedication. Thank you.
Thank you. I did have a question for you, Dale. Let's say you have a conservation easement on, you know, one of these internal to our city pieces of land, but let's say the broadband people want to run a fiber across the corner of it, you know, it's not going to disturb anything, it's going to, maybe temporarily, is that a big deal to deal with?
So, Mayor Coombs, I guess the way I'd respond to that is, when it comes to a complete conveyance of the property, if you will, which is what we had to do on the Boston Avenue right-ofway coming from Main Street over to Martin Street, where we actually, the street fund actually purchased that portion of the right-ofway for Boston from the open space fund, that, I think, is the complete intent of that, of our conveyance ordinance. And I'd probably defer to city attorney Eugene May on whether or not, say, a conveyance of an easement would constitute it. I think it may. I think it may be something that you would want to anticipate and try to lay out and understand what that is, but I do think preserving the flexibility, because even though we don't know where everything is today, I think a general understanding that so long as the disturbance of the property is minimal, or very little, if you're burying a pipeline or burying a cable, it probably doesn't defeat the purpose of why the property was originally purchased, whether it be for agriculture or for other areas. That may be more difficult if you're, say, going through a very sensitive area along the St. Green, in which case, we would probably work with the utility company to try to find a better route, and to come right down through there.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. What about putting another airport down there? Wait, never mind.
That would be a different discussion.
So, the, anyway, so, my thoughts, I don't have any questions for you. I think that, in reviewing the statute that was passed by the voting public, I think that the citizens group that brought this forward is right, it speaks specifically to, "The purpose of open space is the preservation of natural areas, wildlife habitat, wetlands, agriculture, and visual corridors," and it speaks to "the conservation of natural resources, including but not limited to forest lands, rangelands, agricultural lands, aquifer recharge areas, and surface water." Okay, so that's clear, but, it also touches on four other areas, linkages and trails, access to public lakes, streams, and other usable open space lands, stream corridors and scenic corridors, so it allows public access. It talks about district parks devoted to low-impact recreational uses, so again, directly related to public use. It talks about implementing greenways and open space policies, but it also says, "or strategies of the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan." And then last but not least, urban shaping buffers between or around municipalities or community services. So, those four, to me, talk specifically to the public being able to use the land and have access, but it also says that those lands should also be used in order to accomplish the strategy of the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan. So, the way I read this, I think that it is a little ambiguous, but I would have no problem moving forward with the proposal, so long as, as you've already touched on, if we need to use these lands to accomplish things surrounding utility, I mean, I don't want to give up the utility easement, I don't want to give up the ability to widen the river corridor in order to flood mitigation, I just, I think the purpose of this is to make sure that we, "Once acquired, open space may be used only for purposes set forth above," I read those to mean no commercial or residential development, but if the city needs access to those lands for, I don't know how we do it, street widening or whatever, I would want to make sure that we're not bound in the future.
And again, I believe, Councilmember, or Mayor Portman Bagley, that that would be the, again, the policy that we have under Ordinance 2011-10, that does allow for that disposition, and the intent there is to, again, look at the specific attributes of any particular property, and to keep the open space fund whole as you go through that analysis and that work. So, I think the tools are in place, but again, the crafting of the actual conservation easement is probably something that will take some time working with our legal staff to draw that up.
I think there's other comments, but if everyone had already spoken, I would actually move off Option 1, but I'm going to give my fellow council members. So I'm not, okay? Great, I move Option 1, that we approve the initiation, we initiate the disposition of open space process, refer the item to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the purposes, for the purpose of evaluating the placement of conservation easements on those city-owned open space properties that currently do not have them, with taking into account the concerns that have already been raised by staff and council, and will be raised by council, I'm sure.
I'll second that. Councilmember Santos?
Well, third. No, I had the same questions that Councilmember Bagley had. I know we have, and Councilmember Levinson and I were on council when we did 2011-10, as long as there is some mechanism, if needed, not willy-nilly, we're going to go put a road out in the middle. road out in the middle of wherever. That's what we did with Pla Blokis, now Dickens, Dickens Park. So as long as that is, and staff looks at that, I have no problem with this. I also like that it's, we're not bound by one entity or another for the conservation easement to go in together, because some have their strengths and some have their weaknesses, and most of them have a little bit of both. So that's just a comment.
Councilmember Lovison?
I think that what's before us tonight also reflects what the city has always asked for when we have partners and we're buying open space ourselves. We ask for that conservation easement, or we restrict development, whether it be West Union or the Collins property. We've always asked for this, and it just seems that this suggestion to explore this possibility is absolutely consistent with that. One question I had is that when I'm looking at the ordinance that established the sales tax, sales and use tax, it says that it ends in December 31, 2020. So would we be in about six years, or less than six years, we would begin to review this anyway, would we not?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember, it's been extended, I think, to 2034.
Okay, that's what I thought.
2034.
Okay. So we're good for a while, then. All right.
Probably longer than I'll be here.
That's right. Yeah, is that your retirement date? So I just want to make sure that we're solid on that, and I guess I would like to make sure when we're voting on this that we look at partners for the conservation easement that would be cost-efficient, because if we enter into those kind of agreements and the management of it and the holding of it costs the open space fund, that's kind of not the, we can't, that's not quite the purpose of the open space tax either. So I just want to make sure that we're not going to, you know, drain the open space fund, but we're also not going to be taxing the general fund with administration of something that's not, I mean, we could choose to have it be in the general fund, but we have so many needs in the general fund that I don't want to be an unfair burden on either. So I'll be supporting this motion.
Okay, let's vote.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is the proposal to enhance use of administrative orders and civil penalties for compliance with health and safety, environmental nuisance, and zoning code violations, as outlined in Title II of the Longmont Municipal Code and John Clark. Our neighborhood and community resources supervisor will start this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to be here as your community and neighborhood resources supervisor. It's been a while since I've been in front of you. I've got Shannon Stadler, our code enforcement supervisor, here with me as well. And we are here to ask council to potentially add a tool to the code enforcement toolbox, and that tool is civil penalties or administrative order. And that tool is like writing a ticket like parking enforcement does. So it's essentially writing a ticket that has a monetary fee to it, only that ticket would be for code enforcement, for code violations. I want to talk just briefly about how it's different than what we're doing now. We have two main processes that we use now. One is abatement, and with abatement, we give folks a notice of violation and give them time to remedy the violation and come into compliance. If they don't, under certain codes, we have the authority to go out and bring the property into compliance. A classic example is weeds, that kind of thing. And then we charge them for the cost of doing that, and we recoup that on a tax lien. The second process is a summons process, and that process is issuing a summons to municipal court. They appear before a judge, and if they're found guilty, have a misdemeanor on their record. What we're proposing is a third option, which is civil penalties, and essentially writing a ticket for those kinds of violations, going through the same process with a notice of violation as we do with the current processes now. So I want to give you an example of where we might use this, because for some of those options are, it doesn't make sense, it doesn't really work. And one of those options might be if somebody had a pod in a street, one of those moving pods, blocking the right-of-way, perhaps creating a safety hazard. So we would have the right to abate that, but what would we do with it? We would have the right to take that person to court, and that process could take six or 12 weeks at a minimum, and does that really make sense? So that's a case where we would give them a time to remove that pod, and if they didn't, serve them with an administrative order or civil penalty. Another example that we might use it for is snow and ice. So we have a lot of snow and ice cases, and our option for that is to abate it, and we would be abating snow and ice all over the city, or to take them to court. And again, by the time we got to court, the snow and ice would probably be melted. So there's some things where we might use this as an alternative. I don't want to say that this is any better than other options. The court option has a lot of benefits around oversight. People are in probation, so if they really need assistance in getting through the system and oversight to come into compliance, that has a lot of benefits. The abatement system is quick and deals with those problems, and a civil penalty would be similar to that. So I don't have a long presentation, I just wanted to see if you had questions and if there's interest in pursuing this as an option for code enforcement.
Councilmember Christiansen?
I have several questions. One is, when I'm looking at this chart you have, timeframes, potential code enforcement process, is the stuff on the left, the column on the left, is for the criminal process? And am I to understand that the column on the right is what you're proposing to add that would be the civil penalty?
Councilmember Coombs and Councilmember Christiansen, yes. There would be an option to appeal that, that would come with that administrative or civil penalty. So people would have the right to appeal it. And that would extend the process. What I wanted to try and do in this chart is give you best-case scenario.
Yeah, I think it's a good chart, but, so, I have a, I know that there are problems, but what I really don't want to see is people winding up with misdemeanor charges on their record so that they can never get a job again for something like weeds, which they could get with the criminal process. With the administrative process, they wouldn't get any kind of, because it doesn't go through the court, they wouldn't be getting any misdemeanor charges, right?
Councilmember Christiansen, that's correct.
Okay. Oh, the other question I had is, what proportion of the violations that you issue, I mean, you said, I think there's something like, how many violation notices do you issue a year, about?
We have about 5,000 open cases a year, so all of those come with a notice of violation of some kind. Some of those may be unfounded, but typically over 4,500 cases a year. So the vast majority of those, people come into compliance.
Yes.
The vast majority. And so it's really a very small percentage of those that we're dealing with that don't come into compliance and that we're looking for additional tools.
Okay, that's good. I also noticed a kind of a curious thing here. I'm wondering if maybe you could explain to me the difference between proactive. When I look at the code enforcement trends, this chart, it looks to me like the complaints, which I presume are from neighbors and things, were actually going down. And then about, at some point, you began the proactive stuff, which means I presume that code enforcement was going around and looking for things. And then it sort of added 30% on to the number of violations.
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Christiansen, that's correct. In 2009, council asked us to look at a different and more proactive approach to code enforcement. Up until that time, it was really complaint-based. Close to 80% of our cases were complaints, where people called in, they were angry about their neighbors not living up to the codes. And council gave us some additional resources to deal with that. And through those additional resources, what I've asked code enforcement to do is identify those things that have the most negative impact in their beats and their neighborhoods, and respond proactively to those. So the number of violations have gone up, but those are proactive, the number of complaints are going down. And I'll tell you that a lot of times people call in and say, you know, I've got my neighbors doing this, and more times than not, we already have an open case and are dealing with it. It's really made it a major shift in how we approach enforcement.
Okay. How do you define a junker car?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's a tag that is not current or is inoperable, so it has flat tires, or is obviously not being able to be driven.
But a car that merely had a tag that was not current, that was on somebody's private property, could be towed away and, is that correct? It seems to me, from what you've written, and here it is.
There are options for that.
Okay.
So Councilmember Christiansen, I'm Shannon Stadler, and I'm the code enforcement supervisor. And the city code does state that by simply having expired tags on your plates, you could be considered a junk vehicle under the definition. The reason for that is, if you don't keep your plates current, people tend to just let cars sit around, pretty soon the tires go flat, pretty soon other things start happening. And so on private property, we don't tow. We would issue a notice of violation, expect them to do something with the vehicle, and their options are to get it tagged, move it inside a garage, they actually have the option of buying a car cover for it if they want to leave it outside.
Okay.
If they're unable to do any of those things, the next step currently is for us to issue a summons to court, where they would have to go before a judge. An administrative penalty would allow us to fine them rather than taking them through the court process.
Okay, but you don't tow things off of somebody's, out of somebody's driveway?
No.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Councilmember Lovison?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. John, you know that I've always agreed with being proactive on code enforcement, because I know from trying to mitigate code issues in my own neighborhood years ago, that people were always saying, "Well, the city code inspector drove right past three houses that had weeds taller than the ones that you're going from to, and why didn't those people get cited?" And I think that when you realize that your neighbor doesn't have to call you in, then everybody's going to be looking at being expected to the same standard according to the code. So certainly, a lot of people in a lot of neighborhoods appreciate the better look. I think the city does look better for it, too, and to devote additional resources. I kind of look at it as, you know, self-imposed beautification, if you will. My concern about the shift here is, how scary is it going to look comparatively with this administrative process to people when they get tickets? And is it going to be more or less threatening? I think it depends on not just the letterhead, but the wording, and to be able to still give people time to match up with resources. For example, if you've got a sidewalk on the north side and you have a fence, there is very little way short of going outside with a blowtorch in the winter, that you are going, once the people walk by, especially in areas with heavy pedestrian use, that anyone is going to get the ice off of that north side. And I've seen people go out and spend hours chipping away. It would be like, you know, trying to chip away the ice off of the ice skating rink. So in these really difficult situations, I want to know, is it going to look like really heavy-handed, no negotiation, this is what we're going to do to you, you know, size up or ship out? You know, I want to know, I don't want it to be too heavy-handed, because most situations, people want to comply, but also it could be that somebody was on vacation and the neighbor kid didn't do a good job, and they may have made an arrangement. And for a lot of these things, it could be that you go on vacation, the neighbor kid doesn't mow the grass often enough, and we've had a lot of rain. So what do you do to accommodate people that might be out of town for two weeks or so?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Lovison, I would say, start with, that's not how we roll. It's not the approach that we use. We are seeking compliance, and we do so much work around trying to provide resources, giving people time to come into compliance. Compliance is our goal. Our goal is not to be punitive, or to have penalties, or to take people to court. Our goal is compliance, and so we do everything we can to try and gain that compliance. So the abatement, the summons, and the civil penalties come in after that point. So, you know, I can't say that, you know, well, I would say that personal discretion for code enforcement is important, because every situation can be different, but our goal is to get compliance, not to be punitive. And the civil penalty would be applied like other penalties. And in some cases, the cost of hiring the contractor that we have an account with, having them charge with an administrative fee on top of that, can be more expensive than even the civil penalty, or ultimately encouraging them to find a way to do it themselves.
And if I can jump in, I think from experience, I have seen more success, depending on the nature of the issue. So obviously, code enforcement deals with a number of issues, but depending on the neighbor, the nature of the issue, I have seen the civil side of it where you're actually more successful than if you run through the criminal process as you're moving through these. And for example, I think it's also dependent on the need of the community in terms of what you face. So in the first community I worked in, high weeds were a major issue. And come spring, it was a nightmare. And so the council at that time said, "We're going to take the civil approach," and they adjusted their notifications, and what we actually saw in the community was a higher compliance, because it was a one notification within a 12-month period. And so we saw folks staying on top of the mowing that they hadn't been staying on top of before, because they knew that they could get a notice, they had X number of days to mow it, and then they had X number of days to mow it, and then they mowed it, and then they got another notice on another one. And so what we found is that it was the worst of the worst, that we were really having issues with the, on the system. And so depending on the issues, and this is not a one-size-fits-all as you approach this discussion, it's really focused based on each one of the categories that they have to deal with, but it can be more successful.
Well, I really like the, this code enforcement being proactive, you know, from, I have a duplex, and on one corner, I didn't realize it, but a juniper bush was growing a little bit further than it should, it's kind of blocking the sightlines from a stop sign, and I got a nice letter from the city that I was violating code and had to be fixed by this, but, you know, I just appreciated knowing that. So I went down there with my chainsaw and my trailer and took three or four loads over to the tree limb diversion, and it was done, it was cleaned up. I mean, if, you know, I just appreciate the city coming out and telling me that I had a problem that I wasn't aware of, and just think that it's a good service to the city. So I'm in favor of how we're doing it now. I'm also in favor of civil penalties. I think this is a great move forward.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I've got some concerns, and that is, I view abatement as the civil solution. And my concern here is that...
And my concern here is that we're calling it a civil solution, but when I read the packet, I look at it as just a way to get around due process. That would be my concern. Specifically, meaning ticketing someone, and then having the city or a city staff member go, "Oh, by the way, you're guilty." I don't think government should impose ordinances and also be the hand that deals out the punishment. I think there's a reason why we use Judge Van Dehey. I think there's a reason why it takes eight to 10 weeks. Anytime the government gets involved and says, "Well, we're just going to do what we want, and we want it done in 10 days," makes me cringe. I see it in the criminal process, I see it in the civil process. What we're talking about here is not the civil process. It's basically an administrative process where the city just goes, "If you screw up, we're going to tell you you screwed up, and we're going to collect your money." And there's an appeal process to a staff member, and you're done with it. I don't like that idea. I'm not opposed to a civil process that has due process, that you go back to court, that you engage Judge Van Dehey. But due process takes time, and I think it's a trade-off. We could have clean-cut juniper trees all over town, but we'd also have, you know, a lot of people getting tickets from staff members, or police officers, or whoever, code enforcement, that is arbitrary, without a way to appeal their decision. So I guess I'd, before I'd be for it, I'd want to see how it would work. But I wouldn't want a staff member or a director of our city being the appeals person. I would truly want a civil process, where you still get ticketed, and you're not facing jail, but you're facing a fine, and you go before the judge, and I just think there needs to be due process, as much as I am very tempted to say, you know, "Let's go get them, you got to obey the rules." So that would be, until I see how that process would work specifically, I'm going to withhold my vote. I'm not opposed to staff looking into it and coming back with suggestions, but I'd be opposed to voting or deciding now.
Mayor Coombs?
I'm not going to abstain. I'm just saying that to get my vote, I would need, I would need more. My direction would be, come back with something that makes sure that due process is protected.
And that is the question before the council today. The question before the council today is, do you want us to look at this, and what would you like us to consider? It's not go forth and conquer.
Well, I guess I would, the administrative process, best-case, 10-day process. If that's the case, I want to know what due process is, who's the administrator, what's the appeals process? I'd want to see how that works, rather than, I just don't want to call the civil process circumventing the traditional legal protections that we have in our form of government. And then, and by the way, misdemeanors, usually you can still get a job with a misdemeanor. So...
Mayor Proton Bagley, we are proposed to bring back, or we're prepared to bring back some proposals that...
Oh, you're a power monger, John. I can tell right now. Councilmember Levinson?
Councilmember Bagley, I, you know, had the same concerns that you just spoke about. I think instead of just bringing back a draft ordinance immediately, I would like to, instead of just bringing it immediately for first reading, I'd like to have a study session and really discuss, kind of, if you could bring us and redact all the names and addresses of a real case that went through this process. And also, when you're looking at, talking about the frequent flyers of, you know, we all know which properties they are, and I know many of them that aren't far from my house, you know, what it would look like for their enhanced penalties. I think that would be really useful to us, to be able to see what it would look like and how people would be likely to react to the notice. If it's your, you know, well-seasoned slum landlord, you know, that's kind of stuff that we want to address. And I know that your department and others have really been working with landlords to address maintenance issues and everything else. I think what this does, though, and I'll just tell you a little story of, many years ago, there was a rental property that was not well-kept, not very far from here, in fact. And on two days before Christmas, they decided, the tenants, they were going to have a huge sale. It wasn't your typical garage sale. They had hundreds of tires in the front yard, hundreds of tires. And they had stacks and organized and prices. And I got a call from the next-door neighbor and saying, "What the heck are you going to do about it? You're neighborhood leader." And because it was over the Christmas break, there was almost nothing that the city could do to take action at this rental property, even though it was a hazard to have those tires piled up because of, and they were ugly. And the tenants were on their way out, and they decided to leave not only those tires, but a whole lot of other tires and debris in the front yard, in the side yard, in the backyard. And it was an embarrassment, not just for the next-door neighbor, but for the entire city, for this condition of property to exist. And it existed for more than 21 days. I have to tell you, my phone rang off the hook every other day, with new people saying, "What are you going to do about this? Why isn't the city doing something about it?" And I think precisely having a speedier reaction will take care of that kind of situation. And in fact, the person next door said, "I'm so glad that nobody on my block has their house up for sale, because what would that do for you selling your house if there was that situation on an ongoing basis?" And it really does disrupt property values in adjacent properties and within neighborhoods. So I think the other point of this is that none of these will apply in any neighborhood that has a homeowners association, because frankly, if you've got an HOA, they've got many more restrictions, and they will be down, you know, if you have one small blade of grass not the right height, many times, your HOA sends you a letter without any delay at all. So I would just like to have that scenario run with several different items that have been action items, and see what it really looks like.
Okay. I don't see any else in the queue, so...
Is there any direction the council wants to give us in terms of, I mean, we've heard a lot of...
Yeah, I think we should go forward with this, myself, I would like, I'll make a motion that we go forward and investigate this, with taking into some account that there is some sort of, you know, due process if we get jammed up. But I like this approach. I think, you know, for some simple things, it can be a lot more expedient than for both the, you know, person being ticketed. I think I'd rather just pay a ticket than have to go to court, you know, if that was my choice. But if I want to go to court, I should have, I guess, that option, if I thought I was... So as long as we address that, I think we should, I'll make a motion that we go forward and study this and bring back an ordinance in the future.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Levinson?
Oh, yes, just excuse me.
Oh, sorry, Dave.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think we beat this horse to death. You've heard the concerns of council, members of council, so I guess, take that into consideration. So I think we're done, personally.
Councilmember Levinson?
Yes, I would not like to see just an ordinance come forward. You know, I'd like to, again, look at an ordinance and then, side by side, with all the information redacted, what you've seen, and how it would look different. And then we can make a judgment as to, is this going to be more threatening? Is it really going to get the desired results? And if there's any way you can road-test it with, you know, landlords or, you know, other people that can give you some feedback before we start going down that path of a strict draft ordinance, I would like that information as well.
Councilmember Christiansen?
I would like to, I can't, I have the same concerns that Mayor Proton Bagley has. I would like to not, I trust the current people in city government, but I don't think you can build public policy based on trust in personalities. I would like to see more of a process, or see some more development before I can support this, on how this would work and not lead to eventual tendency to just say, "No, you're not going to appeal anything," you know? Thank you.
Councilmember Santos?
No, I'm saying, everyone's talking, so I'm going to go ahead and talk again. I mean, because we're saying, members of council are saying the same thing over and over. I think you've heard, again, you've heard the concerns of council, that this isn't going to be implemented to, I guess, if you're going to vote to support the motion, is to go forward with everything that you've all said, and it to be taken into consideration. If you vote no, then we just, and the majority, you know, votes no, then this just goes away. So I think we're all in favor of at least seeing something come back, and then we'll just see how that plays out, not so much in a, again, repeating what everyone has already said, a first reading scenario, but perhaps a study session.
What I'm hearing is that we will bring this back in a study session.
Okay.
With further detail and more information.
Should we formally vote on this? On our...
If I might, Eugene May, City Attorney. So I worked on ordinance like this in Westminster. It has been road-tested in a number of jurisdictions. I was just looking at the ordinance. In the Westminster code, there is an appeal process with a hearing officer appointed by the city manager. We do make several procedural steps to make sure due process is observed. It's not a city staff member saying, "Oh, there's a violation." And yes, it is a violation on appeal. It's to an independent hearing officer. I attended a couple of these hearings. You know, it's the opportunity for the property owner to present his case, present evidence, witnesses, cross-examination, the whole nine yards. So, you know, we're here for direction. We didn't want to give council a draft ordinance, but, you know, it'd be easy to take a look at the Westminster one. I imagine if we're asked to draft an ordinance, it would look a lot like that one. And I take no pride in that one, because I copied large portions, I think it was Denver and Northland. So, you know, plagiarism is the greatest form of flattery, and you also know that it's been tested in if or not challenged in those other communities.
Nine yards. Okay, let's vote. Pass the seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is approved membership in the US 36 Mayors and Commissioners Coalition lobbying contract. Sean Lewis will introduce this.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, Sean Lewis, Assistant City Manager. This item before you is a request by a coalition that Longmont is a member of. As you probably know, Mayor Coombs represents the council and the city on the US 36 Mayors and Commissioners Coalition. This is a group that Longmont has not formally been a member of in the past. This year is the first year that they, that we are being asked to be a formal member. Part of that membership, historically for that group of cities, has been participation in an annual lobbying contract. And as you know, the US 36 Coalition has been very successful over the last five years in obtaining federal funding, in obtaining legislative changes that have benefited and sped up the US 36 project. But as you also know, that project is nearing completion, well, not completion, but funding and the steps to complete that project are now underway. And so what the 36 Coalition did really in 2013, as well as some this year, is really turn their focus from 36 itself and looking more regionally from the participating jurisdictions, especially Longmont, even though we weren't a voting member, and really turn their attention to bus rapid transit. So you saw both the US 36 Coalition, as well as NADA, the North Area Transportation Alliance, end up coming in, both supporting 119 as the number-one priority in the region, that's the entire RTD region, for bus rapid transit. This is a major shift in terms of kind of the political will and political assistance that Longmont has received in the past. And we believe that that is very much as a result of the work of the 36 Coalition coming in behind that, even though the only participating jurisdictions that benefited from that are Boulder and Longmont. Really, all of those cities coming in and supporting that prompted NADA to support it, and ultimately ended up making the NAM study reflect that priority. So we do feel like there has been benefit, especially in the last couple of years, in terms of working with this coalition. Mayor, you may want to speak more to the specific request. We've both attended the meetings with this coalition. Last year, Jeff Moore represented city council on the lobbying trip. We were asked to attend that, or offered the opportunity to attend that, even though at that time, we were not a voting member of the coalition, and they were really just extending that out of courtesy. This year, again, we're being asked to be a formal member. And the cost of that lobbying contract for Longmont's portion would be a little over $13,000.
Well, we all know that transportation is a regional problem. You know, probably three years ago, if this thing would have came up when I first saw it on council, I'd say, "Well, why are we even interested in this? Because, you know, we're not on 36." But, you know, the other cities around us are supporting Highway 119 development, even though it's not direct. But everything's always indirectly affected. Transportation is a, you know, it's a network of roads and connections, and, you know, a good way for us to get downtown from here is 119 to Boulder, and then take the bus or train from Boulder to Denver. You know, it's not a whole lot of money. I think it's because of the support we've gotten from other communities in the 36 corridor, I think it's time for us to ante up and be part of the group. That's my opinion.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Where is the $13,000-plus coming from for this? If we do decide to do...
Maybe council contingencies.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Any other questions? Councilmember Moore?
I move to approve membership in US 36 Mayors and Commissioners Coalition lobbying contract.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Okay. Well, let's vote. Okay, pass the seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is board and commission appointments. If you'll give me just a second.
Can we just, like, a five-minute break? Me, me, 10 minutes.
I got a few short ones.
And we're here for our board and commission appointments for the end of the year. A couple of years ago, you asked us to split these into two sections, mid-year and end-of-year. So, this is our second round of doing that. We have several boards that we didn't get enough applicants for, so we will be re-advertising those at the end, but I think there were four boards this time that we still have some vacancies on. Let's start with the Airport Advisory Board, and you do have ballots in front of you to help you with this process. We have two regular members and an unexpired regular member. So normally, what we do is vote for the two regular members first, if you want to do that, and then we'll come back and the remaining ones and do the last regular member. I don't know where he is.
So this is the two-
Two regular member terms for the Airport Advisory Board, ending 2017. So vote for two. Airport Advisory Board, Councilmember Moore. Just vote for two regular members at this time. Can you give her back her ballot? Okay. So you're just voting for two members now, and then we'll come back and vote for the third one.
Yeah. It's the official, the Christmas dessert. No, it's not Christmas. It's the official dessert.
Councilmember Finley voted for Dan Berry and Danny Haney. Please correct me if I really butcher these names. Councilmember Christensen voted for Dan Berry and Danny Haney. Councilmember Santos voted for Dan Berry and Danny Haney. Councilmember Coombs, or Mayor Coombs, excuse me, voted for Dan Berry and Danny Haney. Sorry. Councilmember Levison voted for Dan Berry and Danny Haney. I think we've got the winner. Bagley voted for Dan Berry and Danny Haney. And Councilmember Moore voted for Dan Berry and Danny Haney. So those, Dan Berry and Danny Haney will get the two regular member terms ending in 2017, and now we need to vote for one of the remaining persons for the unexpired term. Bagley voted for Kurt Gatman. Coombs voted for Kurt Gatman. Finley voted for Kurt Gatman. Santos, Kurt Gatman. Moore, Kurt Gatman. And Christensen, Kurt Gatman. So Kurt Gatman will get the 2015 term. Your next board is the Board of Environmental Affairs. You have one unexpired term, so vote for one individual.
Board of Environmental Affairs?
You know, I don't know whether he did or not. I was gone on vacation, and I, Michelle did not tell me that. Doug Ray, did he withdraw his application?
He didn't show, or he said he couldn't make it.
That doesn't mean he withdrew then necessarily, so he's still under consideration if you want to vote for him. Councilmember Santos voted for Joe Parker. Finley voted for Joe Parkler. Bagley, Joe Muddler, Mulder, excuse me. Moore, Joe Parker. Christensen, Tisha Baharas. Not sure. Coombs voted for Tisha, and Levison voted for Tisha. So we have two with three votes, Tisha and Joe Parker. So vote one more time for one of those two individuals.
Oh, it's your turn. So hanging chess.
Board of Environmental Affairs.
Either Tisha or Joe Parker.
Board of Environmental Affairs. Okay. Bagley voted for Joe Parker. Finley for Joe Parker. Christensen for Tisha. Santos for Joe Parker. Coombs for Tisha. Levison for Tisha. And Moore for Tisha. So Tisha is the appointee to the Board of Environmental Affairs. She received four votes. Okay, then we need to go to Callahan House Advisory Board. You have two regular-
Councilmember Bagley.
Thanks, Mayor Coombs. My question is for the Environmental Board. My question is for the Board of Environmental Affairs. Do we want to, I know, my impression is, and I'm not the liaison, is that they've kind of been stuck, and that meetings are few and far between. And so my question is, do we want to consider, in the near future, doing away with everybody who is currently appointed, and then creating new appointments? That is my question.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I don't, I'm not sure about, it's an interesting question, but when I was liaison for the Board of Environmental Affairs, we met, I think we only missed two or three meetings throughout the year. Not being the liaison now, I don't understand what's, why they're not meeting, or, but they've had topics. I mean-
This one needs, they should be meeting.
Yeah, they should be meeting. I agree.
Yeah, I am the liaison, and I'm unclear what they're doing. They're an odd board, because everybody else seems to be affiliated with, you know, the senior center, or the senior advisory board is affiliated with the senior center. The advisory board doesn't, and Health and Human Services, or Housing and Human Services, is affiliated with all those, you know, services. But Environmental Affairs is not clear on what its mission is.
Mayor Coombs, oh, sorry. Mayor Coombs, and members of council.
Anyway, I don't, I don't approve of getting rid of everybody, but they certainly need to figure out their mission and get back in gear, and I will do what I can to do that this year.
Mayor Coombs and members of council, and Eugene can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the ordinance says that the Board of Environmental Affairs will, will take up issues directed by council, so perhaps maybe some, doesn't it need to, I believe that's what it says, so he can look that up if he wants.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, again, there were items that were not sent from council to the Board of Environmental Affairs when I was liaison regarding the mall, regarding mosquito abatement. There were several things, fracking was one of them as well. When council redid the bylaws for the Board of Environmental Affairs, it was, you know, it laid it out, but staff came up with topics, so I'm confused.
Aaron Council, the ordinance says the board shall only consider issues not specified in this chapter if authorized to do so by city council. So, the ordinance lays out some parameters. I think, Councilmember Santos, you were referring to when they got outside those parameters as set forth in the ordinance.
No, again, I, you know, I know we're doing board and commission, so let's get through-
I would suggest that we bring this back for some further discussion and have the staff liaison present here as well.
We'll have the staff liaison here to discuss the issue.
Thanks.
One other thing, the charter provides that board and commission members, serve at the pleasure of council, can be removed by two-thirds vote.
All right, so the next one is the Callahan House Advisory Board. You have two members. You can vote on those, or you can make a motion whichever way seems most appropriate for you at this time. Yes.
Councilmember Santos, did you have a question?
Thank you. Well, we don't have ballots, because there's only one member, so one person that applied. So I would move that we apply Jillian Kramer, appoint Jillian Kramer to the Callahan Board.
I'll second that. Okay. Hold on, favor.
I need you to raise your hands. Okay. Thank you. And we'll re-advertise. Golf Course Advisory Board, again, you have the same situation. You probably don't have a ballot in front of you. You have one person and two regular positions, and you can make a motion to appoint this person.
Well, we did have an email saying that someone that applied for another board would also be happy of serving on the golf board, and that was, I believe, Shannon Wheeler and Mike Jarvis. So I don't know if we can want to consider them for that board, even though they didn't formally apply for it, they said that they would, in an email that we got.
Mike Jarvis didn't show up.
No, he didn't show up in the interview.
You do have one position that we'll be re-advertising for, and we can contact those individuals if they don't get appointed, and ask them if they'd like to apply for this one, if you want to do that.
Okay. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move that we appoint Ann Dorzinski to the golf board.
And we will open it up for additional applicants, but we will contact, if Shannon and Mike do not get appointed, we will, to another board, we will contact them individually. Okay? Historic Preservation Commission, you have two regular members and one alternate member, so if you, you can make a decision around the two that applied, and then we can open it up, or we can just open it up for more applications.
I would move that we appoint Gita Gayu and Charles Lyman for the two regular members for HPC. Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm the council member liaison to this board, and to be honest with you, when I've been reviewing Charles Lyman's application, it's really slim on anything involving this board at all. I mean, you know, noting that we have buildings 100 years old in the city of Longmont. And one of the critical aspects that this board is lacking is the kind of expertise. We don't, we used to have, always have an architect on this board. We no longer have an architect. We have one person who has an architectural drafting background. We do have people that live in historic properties, but fewer of those people on this board. And one of the elements that this board does handle is a statutory responsibility of the city of Longmont being a local government entity that would certify state tax credits. And I think that it's really critical that there is some knowledge, or at least, you know, something from people that have applied for the board to indicate that they know any kind of the business of the board, plus to be able to understand and interpret the application of the US Department of Interior standards that goes along with the tax credit. So, my recommendation would be, since we're going to be advertising again, is to just simply appoint Gita Gayu, who clearly has solid background, and ask that we not appoint Charles Lyman at this point until we can get some further indication of, you know, a firm interest in the particular work, specific work of this board.
Councilmember Santos.
Well, if we're going to go, we were, six of us were at that interview. We all talked to Mr. Lyman. We talked about his, you know, wanted, you know, he's applied for boards. You know, if we want to go back and look at some of the votes we just taken, there's a couple people who we appointed that have no idea what, they really had no inkling, or hadn't read any of the minutes, or hadn't read any, been to any of the board meetings of the boards that we just appointed them to. And we've done that throughout, you know, I've been on council. Some people had really no idea where even to meet. We have folks that have expressed, expressed an interest. There's a motion and a second. If we're going to start putting parameters about what this board needs, and specifically focus on, do we need an architect? Do we need a surveyor? Do we need an appraiser? Do we need this, and this, and this? Then we need to look at the Historic Preservation Commission's bylaws and change them.
Okay, I guess we do have, Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I liked, I liked Russ. Mr. Lyman had a big beard and was jolly, and I remember him just showing up saying, "Look, I really am jazzed about the fiber optic, but I'm just here to serve, and put me somewhere." And I think enthusiasm goes a long way, and with somebody like Gita Gayu, who actually works for the State Historical Society to kind of lend her steady hand, who knows? Russ could be the next one. We don't know. But I think that if he's willing to serve and is excited to do so, I say we give him a shot, and, you know, we can always go back in a couple of years and tell him, no. So I think we, I'm going to vote for Russ. I also think that we should also consider Chris Wallace, who has some construction experience, not a lot of historical experience, but Chris Wallace also, if you remember, had, interviewed for Housing and Human Services. We didn't vote for him, but he also said he wants to get involved, and would be willing to serve on another board if not accepted, and he wasn't accepted, to the Housing and Human Services Advisory Board, although I know that's not the motion right now.
Councilmember Christensen.
My suggestion would be a compromise in having Russ Lyman be the alternative, since we need two anyway, and we're going to have to advertise for another person. Appoint Gita, Gita as the regular member and Russ as an alternative, since he does have a lot of enthusiasm, and we don't want to discourage-
have a lot of enthusiasm, and we don't want to discourage people from serving, but...
Okay. Councilmember Levinson?
If that, if that's a friendly amendment to the motion, I would support that suggestion. So, but I did not make the motion or second it, so that is up to, but I would, I would agree that that's a great compromise.
What's the motion?
The motion, I would say both of them for regular positions. Yes. Yeah, that's the motion, and, yeah. Yeah, we have to vote on this one first. All right, let's vote on this motion. Okay, that passes five to two.
Thank you. So then we will, we will advertise for the alternate position.
Do you want to appoint Chris Wallace to anything?
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, if he's, you know, I don't, did anybody contact him regarding this, so, you know, I don't know if he's willing to serve on that board.
He's not appointed to Housing and Human Services Advisory Board, which you haven't voted on yet.
Right.
If he's not appointed to that, we will certainly contact him as well and ask him to apply for the alternate position if he has an interest. So now you have Housing and Human Services Advisory Board. You have three regular positions. Should vote for three of those individuals first, and then we'll come back and do the unexpired term.
They were also good.
They were.
Did you pick the right day to prom?
Huh?
Did you pick the right day to the prom?
I think you did. I think I picked the right one.
Okay. Councilmember Bagley voted for Carmen Sample, Deborah Valentine, and Josie V. Hill. Councilmember Moore voted for Carmen Sample, Josie V. Hill, and Chris Wallace. Councilmember Levinson voted for Carmen Sample, Deborah Valentine, and Josie V. Hill. Mayor Coombs voted for Carmen Sample, Deborah Valentine, and Josie V. Hill. And Santos voted for Carmen Sample, Josie V. Hill, and Chris Wallace. Councilmember Finley voted for Kim Sheppard, Deborah Valentine, and Josie V. Hill. Councilmember Christensen voted for Carmen Sample, Deborah Valentine, and Josie V. Hill. So Carmen Sample received six votes, Deborah Valentine five, and Josie V. Hill seven. So those will be the three regular term members ending 2017. If you'll vote for Kim Sheppard or Chris Wallace for the unexpired term ending 2015. Thanks. Councilmember Bagley voted for Kim Sheppard. Councilmember Moore voted for Chris Wallace. Councilmember Levinson voted for Kim Sheppard. Mayor Coombs voted for Kim Sheppard. Mayor, Councilmember Santos voted for Chris Wallace. And Councilmember Finley voted for Kim Sheppard, and Christensen voted for Kim Sheppard. So Kim will be the alternate ending in 2000, not the alternate, a regular member ending 2015. And we will contact Chris Wallace to see if he has an interest in historic preservation. Master Board of Appeals, I don't know whether you have ballots or not for this, but there are two applicants for two regular terms.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. If no one has an objection, I would move to approve Julie and Kevin to the regular member terms.
And we will re-advertise for the alternate position. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, you have three regular member terms ending in 2017. Vote for three of those individuals. Okay. Councilmember Moore voted for Rick Acountius, Karen Kocinski, and Robert Putum. Councilmember Levinson voted for Rick Acountius, Karen Kocinski, and Robert Putum? Is that right? Putum? Putum, thank you. Councilmember Santos voted for Rick Acountius, Sue Alberg, and Robert Putum. Councilmember Christensen voted for Rick Acountius, Karen Kocinski, and Robert Putum. Councilmember Finley voted for Rick Acountius, Sue Alberg, and Robert Putum. Mayor Coombs voted for Rick Acountius, Sue Alberg, and Robert Putum. Councilmember Bagley voted for Rick Acountius, Karen Kocinski, and Sue Alberg. So Rick Acountius had seven, Robert Putum had six, and we have a tie between Sue Alberg and Karen Kocinski, so if you want to vote for one of those two for the remaining position, then we will... Councilmember Levinson voted for Karen Kocinski. Moore voted for Kocinski. Bagley for Kocinski. Coombs for Alberg. Christensen for Kocinski. Finley for Alberg. And Santos for Alberg. Karen Kocinski received four votes, and we'll have the third position. Planning and Zoning Commission, you have a number of different positions open. The longest would be two terms for 2019, so vote for two. And I do not, I'm sorry, I don't have a list of who dropped out. I didn't, no. Did you appoint them? Oh, yes, you did. I'm sorry. Please cross out Charles Lyman. Russ, Charles Lyman, I'm sorry. Just for two right now, and then you'll come back and vote for the other.
Which one wanted, can I point out? Just clarification?
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. My question is, I don't have the applications in front of me. Judson Height, Janelle Fleg, and Chris Teta are all currently serving on the board, correct?
Janelle's an alternate.
Yes, Janelle is an alternate.
Janelle is an alternate right now.
No, Height is a regular.
Someone, some rumor had it that among those three, someone asked to serve as an alternate? Do you guys remember that? I don't.
Well, I know that Judson Height's application says he's applying for P&amp;Z slash alternate.
Now, is he, but is he applying, or is he, is he an alternate? Or is he applying to be an alternate?
I, I took it that he's applying to be an alternate.
I just want clarification, Mayor.
That's how I read it. Yeah, he wants to be on the board.
An alternate?
No, as a board member.
Oh. Okay. I guess that was the case. Okay.
I will have to double check that, because I'm, Michelle told me that it was Janelle that was the alternate right now.
Yeah, right. Janelle is the alternate.
So there would be two vacant alternate positions?
Yeah, so we'll go for two. We'll have a few more votes yet. We'll all get in our way. Don't worry.
Okay.
It'll all turn out okay.
Councilmember Levinson voted for Janelle and Chris Teta. Councilmember Moore voted for Janelle and Chris Teta. Councilmember Bagley voted for Judson Height and Chris Teta. Council, Mayor Coombs voted for Janelle and Chris Teta. Christensen voted for Janelle and Chris Teta. Santos voted for Judson and Chris Teta. And Councilmember Finley voted for Janelle and Chris Teta. So Janelle will be 2019. Chris Teta will be 2019. And you will need to vote for, let's see, three, no, one more for unexpired term ending in 2015.
So just one unexpired?
Just one. And then we'll go back and vote for the alternates, because there will be more. I'm sorry, I was not at the interviews. Did she withdraw?
She interviewed.
No. Let us bring this back. If this is messed up, I don't want to, to take the opportunity away from someone.
Councilmember Santos?
Just for clarification, I'm looking at the website right now. There is a vacancy on the regular board members. Chris Teta's a regular board member. Alternate members are Joel Champion, Janelle Fleg, and Judson Height.
Thank you. So if we have applicants that we have missed, I would prefer to bring this back and re-vote after the first year.
Why don't we write in, so, I mean, the only one that's not on here is Selena Kohler.
She interviewed.
Why don't we write it in here?
We can put it.
So the first thing is, do we need, we can...
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move that we actually put and include Selena Kohler as a possibility on the ballot, and continue with the voting.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that. Let's, let's see, do we?
Right now, they're just voting to add Selena and continue with voting. So they're voting on someone. Add Selena's name to the ballot.
You do know it's Christmas, not Easter egg?
No, it's Hanukkah.
It is Hanukkah.
There's no bunnies in Hanukkah.
Eight crazy nuts.
Okay. Councilmember Moore voted for Aaron Foster. Councilmember Santos voted for Judson Height. Bagley for Judson Height. Christensen for Selena Kohler. Finley for Just, Judson Height. And Levinson for Aaron Foster. That's only six. Whose did I not get?
Oh. I heard you didn't catch mine.
I did not get Coombs.
So you waited and listened to what everybody voted for?
No, no, no.
Mayor Coombs voted for Aaron Foster, so we didn't get anybody with at least four votes on that round. We have two with three, Aaron Foster and Judson Height, so if you'll vote for one of those two individuals. Councilmember Finley voted for Judson Height. Councilmember Santos, Judson Height. Bagley, Judson Height. Coombs, Aaron Foster. Levinson, Aaron Foster. Moore, Aaron Foster. And Christensen, Aaron Foster. So Aaron Foster will get the term expiring in 2015. We had three alternate member terms, but we also just appointed at least one or two individuals that are alternate members, so I'm not sure how many we have open at this time. We have a total of four, and you're on that, so, okay, we have four remaining folks. Wait, wait, wait. Santos is three. Janelle was an alternate, Judson was an alternate.
We need to vote for three.
Need to vote.
Go ahead. I'm, I'm telling you, I'm looking at the board list right now. It's this year.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, Janelle is now a regular member.
Right, so that's an opening.
That's an open. Joel Champion did not apply.
Right.
That's open. And there's still the term for the Judson Heights that currently has. So there's three alternate term, three alternates.
We had the number right, we just had the information wrong. Okay.
There are three alternates.
Well, we'll come back if there's another one, but vote for three. Yes. I will tell you who's, take, cross off Janelle, Aaron, and Chris off your ballot, and that the remaining, and then add Selena, and those are the remaining folks. And Russ Lyman. Cross off Janelle, Aaron, Russ, and Chris, and add Selena. And then you have your ballot.
And how many do we vote for now?
Three.
Three.
Who's on first?
What's on second?
I don't remember who applied for this board.
She did.
So wait, you didn't vote for Judson yet? He didn't make it?
We did.
He hasn't made it. And then Shannon Wheeler with the hotel bond, right? Did we appoint Shannon Wheeler or something else?
Okay. Councilmember, oh, okay. Let's do this one over.
Everybody has a right ballot.
Yeah, no, I just need to get myself more room here. Okay. Christensen voted for Anthony Main, Selena Fo, is it Kohler or Foster?
Selena Kohler.
Kohler, okay. And Marcy Trescott-Helmick. Bagley voted for David Andrews, Judson Height, and Shannon Wheeler. Coombs voted for David Andrews, Judson Height, Anthony Main, and that's it. Okay, Levinson voted for David Andrews, Anthony Main, and Selena Kohler. Santos voted for David Andrews, Judson Height, and Selena Kohler. Finley voted for David Andrews, Judson Height, and Shannon Wheeler? Is that correct? Okay. And Councilmember Moore voted for Judson Height, Selena Kohler, and Shannon Wheeler. Okay, so we have two that voted, got five votes, David Andrews and Judson Height, and then we have two, two that have four votes. So we need to vote between Shannon and, Shannon and Selena, both got four votes. Let me go back and make sure Shannon and Selena both got... I just want to make sure I recorded them correctly, just a minute. I might have done something wrong.
Seven times three, it should be 21 total votes.
Oh. No, I was wrong. Selena had four votes, and Shannon had three. Yeah. So Selena will be the third alternate. And then if we go back and re-review these records, and if there's another alternate, we'll bring it back for your vote in January.
Councilmember Santos?
I mean, see, Bagley?
I've moved that, instead of bringing it back, if there is another alternate, rather than wasting time, just say, I've moved that we nominate Shannon Wheeler as the remaining alternate, if there is a position available. Since he got the three.
I'll second that. Call in favor of...
Is that, what was that, four, two, three, with Moore, Levison, and Santos dissenting? Okay. And I will let you know if, either way. Okay, Senior Citizen Advisory Board, three regular members, ending 2017. I don't believe any of these have been appointed to a board. So vote for three.
Okay, wait a second.
Voting for three for the regular terms, and then we will do one for the unexpired term, or that give the last net to the remaining person.
The hair's going out pretty good. Like a couple of chiapets, that's weird. It's time for, it's time for, it's time for...
Councilmember Levison voted for Jack Belchinsky, Susan Heinrichs, and Emily Scortino? Is that how you say it?
Yeah.
Okay. Coombs voted for Belchinsky, Sue Heinrichs, and Emily Scortino. Moore voted for Belchinsky, Sue Heinrichs, and Scortino. Bagley voted for Belchinsky, Coconhour, and Scortino. Uh, Santos voted for Belchinsky, Co- Coconhour, and Scortino. Christiansen voted for Belchinsky, Heinrichs, and Scortino. And Finley voted for Belchinsky, Coconhour, and Scortino. So it looks like Jack Belchinsky, Susan Heinrichs, and Emily Scortino will get the three regular terms ending 2017. Um, Wilma Coconhour is left. We can either, you can make a motion to appoint her to the unexpired term, or...
Call in favor?
Okay, Visit Longmont Board. You have two applicants for one position. Councilmember Bagley voted for Wes Jessup. Christiansen, Ellen Ranson. Moore, Wes Jessup. Levison, Ellen Ranson. Coombs, Wes Jessup. Santos, Wes Jessup. And Finley, Wes Jessup. So Wes Jessup is appointed to Visit Longmont. Thank you very much, sorry for the confusion, and we'll try to do better next time.
Okay, now it's time for final call, public invited to be heard. Anybody from the public like to come down and speak? Signal one, I'll close, final call, public invited to be heard. Now it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just wanted to wish those happy Hanukkah, uh, Merry Christmas, and, you know, Quan, Happy Kwanzaa. For anybody else that doesn't celebrate those, I don't know what to tell you. Um, no, but just happy holidays to everybody. Be safe, uh, this time of year. Uh, people tend to sometimes overindulge and get behind a vehicle, please don't do that. Call a taxi, call a friend, call someone, so they can come. But call a lifeline. Exactly, Councilmember Levison, call a lifeline, so you don't get behind the wheels of the vehicle and cause yourself a whole lot of trouble later on down the line. So, uh, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, happy holidays to everybody, and to staff. Thank you ver- very much. Um, for this year, it's been an interesting year, uh, with the flood recovery. Um, a lot of folks have worked, you know, well, most of staff has worked over and beyond, um, their job descriptions. I really appreciate it. Um, and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I wanted to thank Next Light for preparing a lovely float and, uh, having things for council to pass out at the holiday parade. It was a lot of fun, and more people than I've ever seen at the holiday parade. Little-known fact, years ago, in the late eighties, I worked for the Heart of Longmont, who, uh, hired me to be their events planner. They had me do the very first holiday on Main Street, uh, by a vote of the board. The city helped me, but I remember going to every business and having them sign off that they were okay, that we could close off the street. And it was, that first parade was pretty meager, but, uh, old Ray Potter, who always does the county parade, helped me arrange it and do it, and it was a lot of fun. And it's so cool to see that it's such a huge event now. So that was fun. And for my business of the week, I would like to make Next Light my business of the week. You should all choose Next Light for your broadband services. And you can find out information about that on our website. Uh, I also wanted to, um, make a statement about, uh, the hardship that we have created for those on fixed incomes with all the increases in our, in our city bill. I, too, received several phone calls about it. And I know we directed staff to, to take a look at, at things we could do to alleviate that burden on those folks. But I would encourage staff to bring back that research on how we can assist folks on, on especially those, uh, fixed incomes, uh, with alacrity as soon as possible, so that we can help them out. Uh, no, we did, we moved that. Yeah, yeah. I'm just encouraging them to bring it back quicker. Because there are, yeah, it's, it's just, um, I feel bad about it, and, uh, I would like to see us help those folks as soon as we can. And I also want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy Hanukkah. Sarah? Be safe, and if you do drink and drive and get a ticket, you should call Councilmember Bagley, who would be my secondary business of the week. But I wish staff, too, a, a great year. I also want to say, I did talk to someone this last week about, they're so pleased that the council members are now getting along really well, because they remember all those years that it was really ugly, and they're so thankful that they don't have to deal with that anymore. And, uh, I know we all are, too. We all have differing opinions, but we all behave civilly, and I appreciate that, and so do our citizens. Uh, and thank you to the staff, Merry Christmas.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Um, I'd like to thank, uh, LPC for considerably increasing my jewelry collection to something more stylish. I'd also like to thank, uh, Vicky Santos for giving us chocolate. This is why we get along better. And, uh, I would also like to thank, the, we had an incident with, uh, theft of an inflatable Santa and an inflatable reindeer. And I, I think it's a good example of why we actually like Longmont. This was something that wasn't handled by, really by the police or by code enforcement. Somebody really, uh, realized they'd done the wrong time, thing. They'd done something dumb, and they apologized for it, and they made it right. And that's what we like about Longmont, you know? And so, everybody have a lovely holiday season, and thank you very much.
Councilwoman Levison?
I would like to add my, um, thanks to, um, LPC and Next Light, and, um, the one complaint I had is, we were in post-position fifty-three. Now, there is some ordinance somewhere that says, "City Council shall not be more than entry number fifteen." There is something, somewhere. Um, but I think the, the, the real con of being number fifty-three is, while we got to see people assembling, we didn't get to see any of the parade, which, you know, really grinched my experience on Saturday night. However, having fireworks restored my confidence in everything bright and beautiful. Um, a couple of other things, um, I, uh, uh, there are a couple of issues coming up from the state level. The, uh, Colorado Municipal Executive Board, um, met on Friday, and one of the things discussed was the state engineer wanting to look at, uh, water retention and people holding water instead of releasing it downhill for, you know, more than seventy-two hours. And, um, I would just like to ask, um, our city manager to make sure we stay on top of that issue. I think we certainly will, but it is a, a matter of concern. Um, I would also like to take a minute, and while none of us could go, I'd like to, um, thank, uh, Councilmember Beth Humannick, who is currently, until January sixth, serving on the Thornton City Council, um, and has been, uh, elected to the state senate. I just want to say, sorry I couldn't be there tonight to wish you well, and, uh, happy trails, Beth, but we're all thinking about you. Um, and then there are two items in our information section of the packet that I, I wanted some additional information on. Number one, there was a, a brief information-only update about the workforce housing, um, issue, and I, I'm not sure what staff wrote back to us is really going to move anything on the issue forward. I mean, it just looks like we're, you know, on the treadmill still, and there's really, I mean, we collect more data and everything, but it, to me, it doesn't, doesn't seem like there's some substantial thing with a urgent timeline. Um, and then the second issue in the packet, which kind of bothers me, frankly, is that, um, we, and unfortunately, it's Karen's, um, uh, got Karen's signature on it as well, is the, uh, lapse of a continued relationship with Tinker Mill in the property that was the former print shop on Fourth Avenue. Um, I, you know, I've been keeping, um, open lines of communication with Scott Converse of Tinker Mill, and the last I heard was that he was talking to city staff and that, um, the first couple of, uh, rounds of conversation didn't yield anything that was mutually, um, beneficial, and he thought there would be some additional conversations with, um, maybe some, some new collaborative efforts. And from what was written in our packet, it seems like the door was closed, even though he thought the door was still open. Um, and my concern around that issue is that it just seems that we're going to devolve that space as just another, um, city meeting space, with not any kind of firm programming, and with so many different departments from community services being able to program that space. I think it'll just be a mishmash and not really serve the purpose that we've had enormous success with right now, with the library in Tinker Mill and, um, innovation. So those, those, the two items that I wanted to, um, bring up. I also want to thank everybody, um, for all the hard work this year, staff and city council included. And, um, thanks, uh, to everybody for, um, uh, good holiday wishes, and I want to wish everybody Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, and a very Happy New Year.
Good evening, Mayor and, uh, city councils. So would you like me to respond? Would you like staff to bring, what would you like me to do? Because I'm here, I'm here. So, um, so I'll start with the workforce housing task force recommendations and follow-up. So, so, um, you know, I think what we included in the communication was, we, we wanted to confirm, we outlined the direction that staff believed we got from city council, uh, when we were before you, back in August. And so that is what we outlined, um, and then we also outlined how we plan to move forward. And the timeframe for bringing back those items in our, in our recommendation to city council. Um, I believe Kathy indicated that we would be able to bring that back by, um, the end of the second quarter, which would be June. So the first six months of, um, 2015 is when we anticipate doing that work. I think also Kathy included in the communication that there is a great opportunity, um, it appears, uh, in terms of being able to really, um, work with the consultants that will, um, that will be using for the, um, comprehensive plan update, that there will be some opportunities to really, um, piggyback on, um, data and work that will be collected through that process that will inform this process. So I think staff was really excited about that opportunity. And, um, and then also probably being able to do some additional contractual work with some of those subconsultants to complete the rest of the items on here. So, um, so anyhow, we, I think the one thing we wanted to do is just confirm that this was the direction that you gave to staff, and, um, and that this is how we were planning to move forward, and, and we were actually fairly excited that we could get this done and back to council, um, you know, by the second quarter of 2015, which we thought was pretty, pretty responsive. So, um, so we'd be glad to get additional input or bring this back, uh, for further discussion in, um, in one of your early January meetings, whatever you prefer.
Councilmember Christiansen?
I, I would, I think many of us feel that this is such a critical issue, especially in figuring out the Longmont comprehensive plan, that we really need to spend a lot of time working on this. And what I would also like to see, I mean, I do, I appreciate all the work that you've done and that Kathy's done, and, and the workforce task force. I would like to see specific examples, and maybe that comes from the C and D portions where you're hiring extra consultants. Specific examples of what other towns across this country have done, and how we can, uh, piggyback off of that and use those, implement some of those things. We don't have to recreate the wheel. And, um, more specifics on exactly how many people we have who are homeless, because homelessness and affordable housing and jobs are all kind of linked together, and they're all, homelessness and affordable housing are a continuum, not really separate issues. But thank you so much.
And thank you for that input, and I, I believe that that is, is our intent, and those are, those items would be addressed in, um, you know, like I said, in item D. And, and also, we will continue to flesh out the numbers, because the numbers, um, having accurate data and numbers is, is really important, so we will refresh that.
Yeah, to analyze, be able to analyze what our actual needs are, and of course, they're going to change from, constantly, but, thanks.
Councilmember Levison?
Thank you. Um, one of the things that Councilmember Christiansen and I participated in, in Austin, it was a pre-meeting before the conference, was a, um, afternoon session on ending veterans' homelessness. And so I guess, part of that whole issue of, um, the housing is that, if, when we do that housing count, to know how many of the people that are homeless are veterans, to be able to get folks access to additional resources that could help, um, provide housing units for folks. The other thing is, there are a couple of, um, items coming up in front of this, or one in particular that, uh, will come in front, in front of the state legislature, is, um, a request for a few thousand additional housing units, um, to be funded out of the state budget. Um, I'd like to see, you know, how much, I think it's going to be pretty limited, or what happens on the, um, the front range as far as those numbers, because rural, um, housing, uh, needs are, are very great also. Um, and, and then lastly, I'd like to see whether or not... And, and then lastly, I'd like to see whether or not action on the material defects, construction defects, um, bill that was proposed last year. If changing that is going to have an impact on the creation of affordable housing because there are some assumptions that if that, the high cost of the insurance for material defects, um, the assumption is because those costs would be lower, that additional insurance burden would help affordable housing builders build more affordable housing. So I want to know if there's also some of the legislative and funding aspects coming out of the state.
You know, it's going to be close to like eleven o'clock. Can we like wrap this up or this will give you a never-ending council meeting? Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well said. Uh, the thing is, direction's been given. Um, I didn't hear any motions. You know, we can, what I'm hearing is we need more information, more information, but we want it fast. You know, if you have the wrong information, then you make really bad decisions. Good information takes time to accumulate. There's direction. You know, if it comes back in the second, uh, in the second quarter, okay. If it gets back to us faster, great. But I don't want to cut corners to where we're getting faulty information and faulty data that we can't use. Um, and that's not, you know, that's not a shot at Karen or Kathy or anybody, but I, I just heard councilmembers ask for more information, more information, but we want it quick. Uh, the housing situation in Longmont is not going to be fixed overnight. We can have member, um, resident on resident come down and say, you need to do something, you need to do something fast. If you do something fast, sometime, that's when things really, really go wrong. Um, uh, is there a housing issue in Long, whether it's a single family or multi, multi-family? Yes. The inclusionary zoning, in my opinion, was part of that problem. We got, uh, council rescinded that. Had, the flood did not help. There are a lot of factors, but direction's been given. If it comes back earlier, again, great. If not, just break, I'd rather have good information than faulty information.
Yeah, I guess a positive note, a couple of really neat, positive things are happening. First, there's a record of decisions been made on the Windy Gap. And that's going to be celebrated at Northern Water in Berthoud on Friday, I think at eleven o'clock. Um, and, uh, Platte River Power brought sixty megawatts of wind online this week, which is enough to power twenty-eight thousand homes. Uh, now roughly thirty percent of our energy portfolio comes from carbon-free sources. Nineteen percent comes from hydrocarbon, eleven percent from wind. We also got some really, really attractive bids for eight megawatts of solar. So, you know, we're diversifying our portfolio and the cost of these renewables is coming way down. And I think it's a good thing to, it's kind of like a, when you invest, you want your investments to be diversified. And in an energy portfolio, you want your energy to be diversified. So I'm just really happy with how Platte River Power is performing and I'm really proud of the leadership with Jackie Sargent out there and how well that board's working together. So I'll move on. And so, uh, councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So the issue with the Tinker Mill and that space, I think that the word that we've gotten in an email here tonight was that there were, there's been no real negotiation. It's only been one way from the city to two to Tinker Mill and that they haven't really had the fully sought out thoroughly, a thorough process for how, how they could work together and still provide the services there. So I'd like to make sure that that conversation continues before this space is finalized for the year and see that that, we have a fair and open negotiation with them.
Which email are you talking about? Which email are you talking about? Is it an email only to two councilmembers? It'd be great to see that email. If there's an email, I, I haven't seen it. So if, if there's an email, I, I'd like to have it.
So there in members of council, I know it is getting late, but I, I do want to just, and we'll be glad to, to bring this back. What we wanted to do is to provide a, a progress report and, and to make sure that we are on the, the same page as the direction that council gave us. So, uh, so councilmember Levison, this is not intended to be glorified meeting space. We have had conversations not only with Tinker Mill, but with other partners. And our intent is to provide a maximum amount of programming for all ages in that space and to have lots of different kind of creator, creative maker space. So I, I just want to indicate that we have not cut off or turned off our partnership with, with Tinker Mill. I think the, the, the challenge is really about being able to, you know, would you be dedicated space that would remain for the Tinker Mill group? And that's, that's probably the, the sticking point. The Tinker Mill is a valued partner for the library. They're working with us on the robot space and the bot shop. So we, we believe we have a lot of creative opportunities ahead of us to really embrace this as, as, as maker space. And I think there were some commonalities. I think the sticking point is access, ongoing access at any point in time that the, the Tinker Mill wanted to use that space. So I don't think the conversations are over. We will continue. We value their partnership. We value many partnerships that we have in here. We just want to give a progress report and that we are moving forward with trying to provide lots of different maker opportunities to all ages and abilities in Longmont. So we will continue those conversations. This was an update.
Sandy, would you forward that email to the rest of council, please? All right. Okay, city man, oh, councilmember Bagley.
I was going to say if there's no comments from city manager, city attorney, I move that we adjourn.
City manager, any comments?
So, so the one comment I have is obviously, um, the Windy Gap item was discussed and there is going to be a signing ceremony Friday at eleven AM in Berthoud. And we wanted to see if any of the councilmembers were interested in attending that ceremony. I believe that councilmember Bagley is the liaison to the Northern Water District.
I'm, I'm going to go.
And, and so if you can just get that information to us, that way we can make sure that we have an appropriately sized vehicle and we can get everyone there, that would be great. Eleven AM in Berthoud, so probably want to leave here ten.
Ten thirty?
Ten thirty-ish, depending on, probably ten fifteen, the way it takes for all of us to, to get together. So we'd probably say ten fifteen to make sure we're at least out. Pardon? Okay. We'll meet here at ten fifteen. Normally that means that we could all probably gather up and, so we can hit the road. So if you'd let us know, that'd be great. Uh, one thing I also wanted to talk about, just as part of the conversation, is I know that the, uh, the Tinker Mill was brought up, but, um, in, in terms of the ongoing partnership, we have been having a number of conversations with them, especially as it relates to LAEC and the work that we're doing and, and trying to assist in that endeavor as we identified in the target industry analysis that we performed. That type of maker space is, is important for the economic development functions of a community. So, um, we're having multiple conversations with them in different fronts. Um, so it's not just a conversation on this space. It is also how do we engage in, on the economic development front? I know they made a request, um, at, at an LAEC meeting in terms of funding, um, at the last LAEC meeting. Um, as you all know, I'm now voting member of that board. Uh, we wanted to bring together and put together a policy to regulate or, or to guide us in how we fund that. So that conversation is occurring in that arena as well. So I just wanted to inform council that there are actually multiple conversations going on.
City attorney, any comments?
Mayor and council, I want to wish you all a happy holidays and we'll see you next year.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.